7:13, I'll call this evening's meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Our first order of business is going to be case number... Help me out here, Katrina.
899.
Case number 899. Which is a request for a special permit for number eight, Second Street in North Grafton. At this time, I'd ask the board to introduce themselves.
Bill Yeomans.
Bill McCusker, vice chairman.
Peter Adams.
Kay Reed. Trina Koshewas.
And I think Brian will be joining us shortly.
Jiffy.
Oh, Jiffy, I'm sorry.
Jiffy Thomas.
Yep, thank you. Alright. The way we proceed is that the clerk will read the petition. After clerk has read the petition, the petitioner will have the floor and will have the opportunity to present their case. There'll be a 15-minute time limit for the petitioner. This timeline can be extended with consent of the board. The petitioner shall present required information. All comments should be specific. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition will have an opportunity to do so. Any letters in favor will read into the record at that time. Anybody in opposition will be allowed to speak. Any letters in opposition will read into the record. Opposition will also have a 15-minute time limit. After all the evidence presented, the board will enter into discussion and hopefully come up with a decision. Anyone wishing to speak? Uh, yeah. Before I get to that. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by this board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continued until a later date, at which time further evidence specific... further specific evidence can be presented. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach a microphone. For those online... By the way, do we have anyone online besides what we see here?
Yes, there are three people online.
Alright, so anyone online who wants to speak will have to use the raise hand feature and they'll be recognized by the administrator. Board may ask questions time to time, but overall, conversation should be directed through the chair. At this time, I'd ask the clerk to read the petition.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Ian David Rossi for eight Second Street requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit to allow to rebuild a demolished extension on a pre-existing non-conforming structure where the front setback is currently 1.9 feet and the required setback is 30 feet. The addition will be 2.9 feet off the front setback. The board will conduct a public hearing on August 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in conference room A at the municipal center, 30 Providence Road in Grafton to consider this request and/or take whatever action is necessary, including the granting of a finding, special permit, variance, or other necessary relief allowed under the zoning bylaw. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Metalie Dussel.
Thank you. And we have Brian Waller. So we have the five sitting members here. Brian Yeomans is the reading of the petition and reading of the rules. So at this point, I think we should probably just recognize the petitioner and tell us what's going on.
Okay, I just want to say good evening and...
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Ian Rossi. I'm the owner of Eight Second Street. So, yeah, we want to build...
Actually, I'm gonna interrupt you one minute. Brian, just to make sure, can you hear us and can you speak? Let us know we can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Okay, excellent. Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, we do want to build an addition to the house because of an addition that we lost. It was an addition that was built in 1940. In February of 2022, there was significant water damage that required it to be completely demolished. So we're rebuilding... we were planning to rebuild basically the same footprint as far as the land being used. So on page two of the construction plan, if you have that, it shows in the top left-hand corner the demolished area. You can see the size of the footprint there. In the bottom right-hand corner, it shows the footprint of the expansion, which is roughly the same size. But we do want to build a second story on top of that new addition, along with building a second story on top of the existing structure at the front of the street. But what you can also see on page two at the bottom right-hand corner is that the original house, built in 1833, is still the closest to the street. We're not getting any closer to the street. The new structure is, you know, still set back from there, even though the zoning street line goes kind of right through our front porch. That's how close our house is to the street.
Yep.
So that is our request. And I don't really know if I have anything else to add. Be happy to answer any questions, though.
Okay, you know, there's discussion of the fact that there was something there and you've lost and been knocked down or whatever, but I think that's all probably irrelevant. I mean, what we really have here is a pre-existing non-conforming house that you want to put an addition on. So you need a special permit.
Right.
Okay, so just to... according to the zoning determination, house was built in 1883, is that sound correct?
It's 1833, according to what is labeled on the front of the house. I don't know if the town records are different, but they got that... when we bought it, there's a little plaque on it.
Oh, 1833. I typed it wrong. That was on me this morning typing that.
Okay.
That's just a typo.
Not all that relevant, but when did you purchase it?
2015.
Alright, we're in the R20 zone. Frontage is not an issue. Size of the lot is not an issue. R20s only requires 30-foot front yard setback. You've got 1.9-foot setback, right?
I believe that's correct.
1.9 feet?
Yeah.
Or was I saying 1 foot 9 inches? No, I was saying 1.9 feet. Okay. Side setbacks are all okay. Rear setbacks fine, so none of that matters. Okay, so it looks like we do indeed have a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Alright, that was the main thing I wanted to just work through. So any comments or questions from the board?
When did you rip down the... it was demolished in like February of '23. So the damage occurred in February of '22, after which a long battle with the insurance company ensued. And then when we were sure about how we had to proceed, we started the construction, which included a demolition plan, but we got a separate demolition permit for that. We demolished it because it was completely gutted as a result of the damage. And it did not... we talked to Bob Berger about it and he said that we couldn't do anything with it. We couldn't use it, had to be demolished.
Just explain...
Name an address for the record, please.
Giovanni Petri, I'm from Marlboro, 18 Grand Marlboro. What happened was, once we opened walls, when you open, you own it. So there's no foundation. It was like a solid beam over loose rocks. And then there's no... even tried to argue with the building inspector. It was just pretty much, hey, this is what we have and there's no chance to save it. Otherwise, tear it down and then put a new foundation and rebuild it.
Yep.
Yeah, the long insurance battle was basically over coverage because it was, you know, needs to be rebuilt because of code compliance. And our coverage for code compliance, you know, wasn't what we hoped it would be. So we're having to absorb a lot of the cost, but that's why it was... it took like a year to get started.
Interesting, okay. Other comments from the board? Any comments from the...
Nobody has their hands up.
Okay. Do we have any letters in favor or opposition, other than I think we had something from the... we did have something from the chief and we had something from the town planner, I believe, right?
Yep.
I think everyone's had those, but...
I saw those.
Police department had no comment.
Yep.
Fire department just said when adding the addition of the bedroom, we need to update all the smoke alarms and COs. Border Health had no comment and planning board said they just have to conform to the bylaws and it's not appeared before them.
Alright, I guess I didn't see any... I guess we don't have copies of fire. We have something from the police.
Fire and border health was... should have been in the original packet and then Fiona and police were recent and just got put in.
Alright. Alright, I think this is all fairly straightforward. Nobody here in the room wants to say anything?
They're actually decreasing the non-conformity, right? Going from 1.9 to 2.
I suppose, but like I said, it doesn't matter at this point.
Yeah.
Because it's gone. So, but it could be. Alright, so just a quick run through the findings. I went through findings one through three. We've got a pre-existing non-conforming. Current use is a residence, correct?
Yes.
How many bedroom and how many bath today and how many bedroom and how many bath will it be tomorrow? And when I say today, I don't... the fact that that...
Right, as is, like...
As is.
Right. One and a half bathrooms and three bedrooms.
Okay, and then when this is finished?
Two and a half bathrooms and five bedrooms.
Okay. But it'll still be a single-family home?
Correct.
Alright, and that neighborhood is primarily residential? So that's finding... that's finding F4, F5, F6. So basically, what we have here is current use of residence, proposed use of residence. Current home is three-bedroom, one-half bath. Proposed is five-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. Neighborhood consists primarily of residential uses. So based on findings four through six, proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do we know this is in the WSPOD?
It is not.
It is not.
Peter.
This is not in the WSPOD, so we don't need to worry about all of that. All that goes away. Alright, one last time, anybody want to say anything?
Chair, a quick question. Jiffy?
Yep. Go ahead, Jiffy.
Alright, I'm just looking at the map here and does it show the paved driveway in the street or... Katrina, if you could bring that up real quick.
Is the question that our parking is in the street?
Yeah, is the driveway in the street or...
No, the street is quite narrow, but we do not have a parking space in the street. We have a driveway and then we have a turnaround that's attached to the driveway that's off the street.
So the dotted line in front of the house indicates what?
I think that the dotted line...
I hear.
I don't know what the dotted line is.
If it's that one, that's the driveway.
Okay, hold on, I'm trying to look at the drawing here.
That might be the actual...
Yeah, the dotted line that goes to the rear is the driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's not on the front because it almost looks like the stairs to the house is on the street?
Yes, like as far as zoning goes, the line for the edge of the street goes directly through the front porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the property line, not the street.
Right, yeah, the property line is... looks like those stairs are crossing the property line.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Because there's usually a 10-foot easement from the street.
Right.
So that's where your property line goes right through your front steps.
Right, so I don't own basically that beyond there, like the first two steps of my porch.
Or the easement.
Yeah.
The town easement.
Thank you. Thanks for laughing.
Any other... Alright, so at this point, I'd entertain a motion to close case number 899.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in the second and we need to do this on a roll call vote. So we'll start on the remotes. So Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, so we've closed. Any further discussion? I mean, this seems like a very straightforward situation. I think... where is... I lost the legal notice. Oh, okay, you've got the legal notice.
Somewhere here.
I just have one follow-up question about that regarding being able to sign a document, you know, accepting responsibility if I can start construction before the 14-day appeal period.
So that's something you have to do with Bob.
Okay, so I follow up with him?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll explain everything once we do the vote and everything.
Okay. And just one last quick question, kind of unrelated, but we were talking about the porch. If I ever did want to repair it, because it is kind of in need of repair or remodel that porch, would I have to file for another special permit or as long as I don't make it bigger than what's there?
Another question for Bob.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the zoning enforcement officer, Bob, you know, he makes a decision at this.
Got it.
Applies or complies with zoning or it doesn't.
Got it.
And if it doesn't, then it...
Then it goes here.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, so I think the motion we need is essentially the legal notice. So Ian David Rossi, you're the property owner. Eight Second Street, special permit to rebuild. I'm just gonna say to build. The fact that it's...
Sure.
Doesn't really matter. Special permit to add addition to a... to a pre-existing non-conforming structure where the front's back... yeah, that's fine, we'll just do someone who knows lines. So I've got the modification to the... but that's effectively gonna be our motion.
Okay.
And then I think we probably should tie it to an exhibit A, which probably should be this drawing here. Do you have one?
I have one, but I need two because I have to... I keep one original and give one original to the town clerk.
So it'll be the legal notice per exhibit A. This is where somebody says so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the board members.
Don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet, we're not done yet.
We haven't got it yet.
We're not done yet.
You may be saying something else if we all say no. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Alright, then again, on a roll call vote, Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Vice chairman votes yes. I think I said chairman last time. So the motion passed. The special permit is essentially granted. What is gonna happen next is Katrina needs to type up the decision. It needs to get filed with the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. After the conclusion of the appeal period, you can pick up a certified copy of the decision and at that point, you need to get that filed with the Worcester County South Registry of Deeds, blah, blah, blah. That's actually a very important step, to make sure that happens. And then I know you'd already kind of talked about starting work, you know, before that happens. You gotta work with Bob on that, all of that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So I have 14 days to type up and file the decision. So after I file it, the 20-day start.
Yes.
So sometimes I get it in at seven days, sometime it's the 14th day.
Okay.
I just need your signature of this because this becomes part of the decision.
Okay.
Just sign right on both of those. Anywhere up top is fine.
That we don't need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
You're all set.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Did you give me that? Oh, fine, never mind.
So Brian, I'll just keep driving here. Next thing to do is reopen case number 892, which is Pleasant Street.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
Okay. Actually, while they're getting set off, I think I'll start by talking about when last we met, I was tasked with meeting with folks in town hall regarding the traffic engineer's recommendations. So I did meet with Evan and Paul Canoyer and we kind of went through the recommendations from Tech, our traffic review engineer. They had basically four different kind of categories of things that they recommended. One was a bunch of, let's just say, minor improvements, brush clearing signs, things like that throughout the corridor. That was like one grouping of recommendations. There was work at, I think it's Elm Street and Pleasant, down by the railroad tracks. There were some improvements suggested there. There was the stop signs recommended at Hudson Street and then there were some improvements recommended at Pullard, the Y at Pullard. So those four groupings of things. Of those four groupings of things, Evan and Paul, and it's mostly Paul, was absolutely in support of all of the various improvements throughout the corridor, the various signs and speed signs and all that. They were not in favor of the changes at Elm Street. Paul's comments at the time were along the lines of, you know, because of the Main Street reconstruction work, we've sent a lot of traffic through that intersection and there hasn't been any problems and he didn't think that there was any reason to make any changes or improvements there. Hudson Street, he did not like the idea of the stop sign being added to Hudson Street, felt that the sightlines would be a problem. The road kind of curves as it comes into Hudson Street at that point, so he was against that. And he was absolutely in favor of the recommendations at Pullard, which was basically kind of turning that Pullard intersection into more of a T than the, I guess, the Y at the Y that it was. So those were the recommendations or, you know, that was essentially Paul Canoyer and Evan agreed. That was their feedback on that. Then the following week, we had a follow-on meeting with the applicant and the chief of police and Paul Canoyer and myself. Yeah, yeah. On-site, essentially. And kind of went through the same things again. And the chief of police also agreed that, you know, the Elm Street intersection was fine. He did not necessarily support any changes there. Hudson Street, he agreed as well, did not like the idea of adding a stop sign there. And he absolutely agreed and we actually went and visited and spent some time at Pullard and they are all very supportive of the proposal of Pullard. And the applicant, I think, is gonna show us some things about the changes at Pullard. And of course, chief was very much in favor of all of the other little improvements throughout the entire corridor. So that's a summary of my engagement on that since the last meeting. I do believe the applicant's gonna discuss in more detail the traffic improvement, so I think that's it for me and I'll turn it over to... Steven, you gonna talk?
Sure. Just for the record, Chad Boardman with Eastland Partners, along with Clay Williams with Eastland Partners as well, here tonight with Steve O'Connell and Travis Brown, Turning Point Engineering. And I think Bill actually saved me quite a bit of talking tonight, so that's actually fantastic. So I'm gonna turn it over to those guys, but we did have a great meeting and what we ended up doing was investigating those areas of concern. And the Turning Point actually did an as-built of all the areas. So sometimes it's confusing to what the engineers actually say. So we actually as-built it all the areas of concern and located on a large master map. So the Google images and of the whole street corridor, we identified everything, what Bill was saying, all the trimming, the existing signage, proposed new signage. So it's all well documented on a great plan that Steve will probably kick off with, but and we also do like to... sometimes everybody looks at plans, but it's also important to sometimes go out to the actual field and review the areas in person and see the challenges and what the plans and what people are saying. So I... thanks for your time, obviously, Bill, and along with the chief and Paul as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Steve and he can eloquently explain in more detail.
Thanks, Chad. Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. Before I get started, will you put this up digitally, what I emailed you, or do you just want to rely on the...
Did I get that?
Yeah. I copied you and I sent it to Bill.
The picture's true.
Is that... was that in the email?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. I can pull that up with the email.
Yeah, the email that I think you were just scrolling. Just because of the digital audience, right?
Nope, that's fine. I can get it. Hold on.
I don't remember that being in the email, but I might have just blasted by it.
And I think I did the exact same thing.
You did? The low one? You can bring it up.
Yeah, there's a PDF attached, sorry.
No problem.
Pull it up and...
Let me get back in and I will share it.
You go be fine.
I thought you put it down so you'd like... I did.
Okay. There we go.
You ever see the crafts in your box at Gillette? Yeah. Robert's on his seat that's on.
Is he?
It's not a phone book? Well, maybe it's a phone book.
Couple of them. So just out of think, for presentation purposes, I'll refer to the paper plan, but it's identical as to what you're seeing on the screen for folks here and at home and logged in remotely.
Katrina, maybe if you can kind of help the folks.
Yeah, I will do my best.
So there's five sheets in this plan set. The first three sheets are the Pleasant Street corridor that are overlaid using the satellite imagery and overlaid with existing traffic signage, proposed traffic signage, and then areas of vegetation mitigation and removal that we're proposing and which has been deemed acceptable by the police chief in writing. And it seemed like the attendees at the meeting were also in agreement. We did make... what you are looking at here is some revisions as a result of the discussions at the meeting. So for example, the Hudson Street stop signs, the elimination of those stop signs that were proposed. So I'll get to that one step at a time, but so the sheets are set up such that, starting at the top, this is the Main Street and Pleasant Street intersection. So I will go from left to right, starting at the top, working my way to the bottom of each page. I'll try not to dive in too deep because I think unless there's something specific, otherwise it could be here for a little bit and could be confusing. So starting at the top, Main Street, existing stop sign, and we're proposing a stop-ahead sign as suggested by Tech and agreed to by our traffic consultant. Those were in agreement. Attendees were also in agreement. Moving along northerly to the Elmwood Street and Pleasant Street intersection, there's existing stop-ahead signs, existing stop signs. There's a proposed stop sign on the slip lane. I don't want to get into too much detail at this intersection because I have a special sheet for that. Existing stop signs and dangerous intersection signs. And what we are also proposing to do in this section, in addition to the existing signage and some proposed signage and striping, is vegetation removal as recommended by your traffic consultant, Tech. So as you're on Elmwood Street, looking westerly and you wanna... I'm sorry, heading westerly and you want to look northerly to the right along Pleasant Street, there's some vegetation just near the tracks that obstructs your view. There was a suggestion by Tech to eliminate the stop sign as if you're driving from Main Street to Elmwood Street on Pleasant Street. There's a stop sign here. Was a suggestion to eliminate that stop sign, so that was a through intersection. It was not supported by Mr. Canoyer and the police chief because there's not a lot of history here of accidents, according to them, and any changes like that would probably cause accidents. And the other main reason is that the vegetation removal that would be necessary to get rid of that stop sign is probably not possible because of its being on private property and they have very large trees. So that vegetation being there, the stop sign's important. So moving along to the middle of the plan here, this is the vegetation removal that I talked about. Existing speed limit sign, 30 miles an hour. Nothing else along this corridor, existing or proposed. Moving to the bottom section, moving northerly across the first bridge here. This is a proposed driver speed flashback sign. The location was suggested and agreed upon. was suggested and agreed upon by the two traffic consultants, presented to the attendees of the meeting, here on the plan submitted. It is, if you're driving southerly towards Main Street, just south of the Fitzpatrick Road intersection. The model of those signs, the solar powered, are, they do match what you have in town already, and they are the suggestion of the police chief. So continuing along Pleasant Street, as we approach Powerline Drive, this is the existing driver speed flashback sign that you see. There is existing caution children signage, existing blind driveway signage. Moving to the middle of the sheet, again, traveling northerly past Sunrise Avenue, we get to an existing blind drive traffic sign. That's the same sign you see here. There's a little overlap on these sheets for viewing convenience. Continue to travel northerly, past Peters Way. Just past the house on Peters Way, we are proposing another driver speed flashback sign of the same specifications as the existing and other proposed. We took, we thought it would be beneficial to show the proposed sidewalk on this plan, because it does interact and have correlation to proposed signage. So, you'll see this plan shows the proposed sidewalk along Pleasant Street connecting Peters Way to Christopher Drive. There's the site entrance here at 59 Pleasant Street. The sidewalk continues, and then there's a proposed crosswalk ahead sign. And then, I'll flip the page. So at the top of Sheet 3, again, we see this proposed crosswalk ahead sign. There are some pavement markings. There are some yield markings, and then there's a crosswalk paint markings. And then the remainder of the sidewalk around the corner at the bottom of Christopher, and then some paint markings for the crosswalk to allow pedestrians to cross Christopher Drive. There's an existing stop sign on Christopher Drive. And then, here at the crosswalk, there's a pedestrian actuated crosswalk sign that has flashes. So when a pedestrian pushes the button, the flashes go off, alerting drivers that there's a pedestrian looking to cross the street. To the continuing north, for vehicles traveling in the other direction, there's a crosswalk ahead sign. There's proposed vegetation removal in the right-of-way of a burning bush there that's obstructing views for vehicles exiting Christopher Drive. And then continuing a little bit further north, there's an existing caution children with 25 mile per hour sign. That's obstructed by some vegetation. That vegetation will be cleared and removed, so that sign is visible. Continuing north again on Pleasant, here is the third and final proposed driver speed flashback sign for vehicles heading southerly towards Christopher Drive and the project site, ultimately Main Street. Going northerly, there's an existing 25 mile per hour caution children sign. Moving to the middle of the plan, this is the same sign there. And then, this is where we approach Hudson Avenue. This is the Hudson Avenue intersection. In lieu of the proposed stop signs, it was requested by the police chief that we put proposed intersection signs, dangerous intersection signs, to alert drivers of the Hudson Avenue intersection with Pleasant Street. So, dangerous intersection sign is an existing school bus ahead, school bus stop ahead sign that's obstructed by some vegetation. We will clear the vegetation to increase the visibility of that sign. We will do as much vegetation removal on the westerly side of the Hudson Avenue and Pleasant Street intersection as possible. Most of that sight line obstruction is due to topography and geometry. The vegetation will help a little, but the geometry and topography of Pleasant Street as it rises and turns horizontal curve is the cause of the less desirable sight distance. Moving along past Gary Circle, this is where we come to the other proposed dangerous intersection sign for drivers approaching the Hudson Avenue intersection, driving southerly. Continuing on, we approach the Pollard Road intersection with Pleasant Street. Again, I will get to the details, but we are proposing to reconfigure that intersection to a T-style. Currently, it has that Y configuration with a slip lane. So I'll get to that in a moment. But as part of that work, there's vegetation removal on both sides of Pollard Road that will help drivers even in the reconfigured intersection scenario. And then finally, the last stretch of Pleasant Street headed northerly towards Providence Road, two existing signs. One is that curved road sign, and the other is the school bus stop ahead sign. So the fourth sheet. Fourth sheet of the intersection at Pleasant Street and Elmwood Street. So, the proposal that we presented to the attendees of the site meeting, which again were Paul Canoyer, Chief Crepo, and Mr. McCusker, was that we would reconfigure the slip lane for vehicles traveling easterly on Elmwood Street approaching the Pleasant Street intersection. There is currently a slip lane that allows vehicles to go in both directions. So, if I'm pulling onto Pleasant Street from Main Street, and I want to take a left on Elmwood Street, I could actually cut across the double yellow, pull into this slip lane, stop at the stop bar, and then continue onto Elmwood Street. There is barely room for two cars to queue here. Quite a dangerous maneuver. Normally, you would pull up to the intersection and then take your left onto Elmwood Street. So, everyone and attendants agreed that this should be a one-direction slip lane, so vehicles traveling easterly on Elmwood Street could slip onto Pleasant Street through this lane. It'll be wide enough, it'll be reducing width to 15 feet. It'll be properly signed and striped to direct vehicles. That is, that is now going to be a one-way. Specifically, there will be do not enter signs in the direction that currently allows cars. So it'll be one lane, stop sign, stop bar, reduced pavement width from about 24 down to 15, and then the do not enter signs. And then what happens really as a result of that pavement widening is the island gets larger. So the landscape island gets larger, thereby reducing the pavement width. So, happy that I'm going to move on to Pollard, if that's okay, or you want to stop here?
Anyone have any questions?
Is it a raised island?
No, and there's no curbing. It's just some grass and some hydrant utility pole.
It's just all blacktop now, isn't it?
No.
Is there an island there?
There's grass there. I drive it all the time.
Yeah. Okay, move on?
Yep.
Okay. The fifth and final sheet is the Pollard Road intersection. This shows, this plan illustrates the conceptual improvements. As you can see, the slip lane that exists right now, which is really the primary travel lane of Pollard Road, I won't call this the slip lane. The slip lane is really the lane that you would take if you want to continue north on Pleasant Street towards Providence Road. This is kind of the main travel lane of Pollard Road. So that'll be eliminated. So now vehicles on Pollard Road will travel in this maneuver, and this will be two lanes. Vehicles come to a stop at the stop bar and the stop sign. They can go right or left. Vehicles on Pleasant Street can turn into this intersection from Pleasant Street. We are proposing continuation of the curbing that currently exists on Pleasant Street. Will come up, it'll turn the corner, it'll have a gap in it, and then continue the curbing over to this edge of pavement existing on Pollard Road. The reason for the gap is stormwater that currently is allowed to come down the pavement of Pollard and get into this ditch and drainage feature. Will now run along the curb, get into the opening, and then just be an extension of the ditch down into the existing ditch. What we, this will require a filing with Conservation because of the proximity to the Quinsigamian River. We will file with Conservation separately from the project, just so this has a separate order of conditions. Work and, one thing doesn't hold up the other. But we, this should be viewed as an improvement. We'll be taking pavement away from the resource area and within the buffer zone of the resource area. There'll be a reduction in pavement. And the slip lane that currently exists that allows drivers to, you know, kind of quickly escape onto Pleasant Street, that goes away. Now, one of the main criteria for this reconfiguration is because there's some topographic conditions there that make the sight distance difficult, depending on which lane you're in and where you're coming from. So, if you're up on this slip lane, you're probably a good six feet higher in topography, so you've got a pretty good line of sight in both directions for two reasons. One, because you're higher, which means you can see over the crest that exists in Pleasant Street. You can see cars coming. And then, you're further away from the obstructions that exist over here at the bridge over the Quinsigamian. So, you're further away horizontally. You're up, you know, about five to six feet higher. So taking this lower, closer to the bridge intersection away has multiple benefits for sight distance safety. We're going to reduce pavement. This was very, very much supported by the attendees, and we hope you agree. We did provide some proposed grading on this plan. We're happy to make this as, you know, part of this exhibit that gets, you know, submitted with this overall project and plan set. But separately, this will be submitted with Conservation to pursue an individual separate order of conditions. So, all in all, everything I presented along the corridor, and then these two intersection sections are consistent with all the recommendations collectively between Tech and our traffic consultant. Again, the attendees of the meeting onsite, and we're hoping for your support, but we're happy to answer any questions specifically about some of these traffic-related components that we believe are kind of the outstanding, you know, maybe traffic topics. So, I'll be a good spot to leave it there for discussion and questions.
I'll just add, during the meeting, I was actually able to stand pretty much where you would, where a driver would be at the new stop point. And I was really kind of surprised at how much better the sightlines were. You know, it doesn't seem like it's very far away. It's, you know, it's hard to maybe conceptualize it on paper, but to actually stand there. Now granted, I'm standing, I'm a little bit taller than you would be sitting in a car, but still, it was dramatically different how much better you could see the sightline. So I think this is a tremendous improvement for that, that intersection. You know, I just think it'll be much safer for everybody at this point. And the Chief of Police was very much in favor of it, and as was Mr. Canoyer. So, I think it's all good. Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
I don't want to read any.
Okay. Did we lose Dan, or is he just hidden because...
No, he's here.
Okay, all right.
I can stop sharing, and then you can see Dan.
Yeah.
See, there he is.
Zoom does that. I can't tell who sometimes is there or not. Okay. So, anyone, no other comments? Everyone thinks it's a good idea?
No, it's, it reads well and it looks good.
Okay, great, great. Okay?
Okay. But we will, I guess what we will look to do is probably just have Tech sign off, close the loop from a consultant, if you feel the need. If you're satisfied without that, we are too. I just, I don't want to leave any stone unturned as we, you know, go through this process.
You know, I don't know that we need, you know, I think everything is pretty consistent what they've said. Dan, were you raising your hand or trying to get our attention? Did you want to say something?
I was waving, but I did have a question. It was a little hard to follow Steve's email in terms of who's paying for what. There was some discussion of the applicant doing some of the work, but I didn't see that carried through on all the comments. So, is it the intent that the applicant is going to be doing this work, or are they going to be paying for it and the DPW is going to do it? Has that been discussed?
I think, go ahead, Chad.
Yeah, I could speak for that one, Mr. Hill. Yes, the applicant's going to pay for all this work. There was a mention of the $25,000 for a pedestrian study, but this extensive intersection here at Pollard on all the work necessary, we would ask that that contribution be applied to this particular intersection, because it's pretty significant in there to revise and do this, this area. But I think, I think it's important also to do. And sometimes it's easy for an applicant to do the work rather than, you know, towns at times. So, we're going to do everything that we did propose on all of these plans at our expense, of course, as well.
Yeah, and we'll actually do the work.
And perform the work as well. That's correct, yeah.
Perform the work.
And you'll pay for all the signs?
That's correct, yeah.
Everything you see on the plans will be performed and provided by the applicant.
Yeah, the trimming, the whole thing. We took that corridor. We've recognized that everything's existing conditions, but if we've identified the entire, you know, mile-and-a-half corridor, and we've significantly improved it, and especially with this intersection here at Pollard as well, I think it's a huge win for everybody. So, yep, we'll be paying.
Just a question on that?
Yep. Go ahead, Brian.
That doesn't include Elmwood, right? Isn't that going to be done by DPW?
No, Elmwood will be done by the applicant.
Yep, us too, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, Elmwood's pretty minor. I mean, it's just reducing the pavement width essentially and...
Yeah, I just thought there was discussion previously about DPW doing that because it was minor, and they could do it right away or something. But, thanks.
Great. Okay. Right. If there's nothing else on traffic, I think at the last meeting, you wanted to go over some architectural changes. Or what, is there something else you want to get into next?
I think we spoke to, what, the variances, I think? Waivers?
I think waivers.
Waivers, and then the architecturals.
Yep, whatever. If the board had a burning desire to do one over the other, we thought waivers were pretty straightforward, because the revision to the waiver list is significantly reduced from the original submitted.
You guys have one, right?
Yeah, if you want to go through waivers, let's go through waivers.
Yeah, we, just as a kind of precursor, we felt like the discussions that could result of discussions of waivers could potentially have impacts on plans. You know, we feel as though, you know, plans are 99.9% complete. Just to let you know, the Conservation Commission is ready to approve an issue and order of conditions. I actually had to ask them to stop and keep the public hearing open, so they're approving the same set of plans that hopefully the zoning board approves. So, again, that includes waivers specific to stormwater and the wetlands bylaw that we discussed with the Conservation Commission as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I have a minute to go make copies of the waivers?
Yep.
I could use a copy, too.
Anyone else need a copy?
These are updated, right?
These are the latest. Yep.
You emailed them to us?
Yes.
I know you did, but I don't copy, I don't copy things that get emailed to me.
Because she always says, "I'll have hard copies at the end."
Mr. Chair, this is probably also one kind of outstanding issue in regards to water clarity that also appeared during the last meeting. I think you have some correspondence from the Water Department as well.
I was going to get to that.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I've got to have a copy, thanks.
Jeff, do you want to have a copy?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else need a copy?
All right. You want to lead us through these, or how do you want to?
I'll ask you the same thing. I'm happy to do whatever.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you lead us through them?
Sure. Okay, so the first waiver request is a request with relief for Section 3.2.3.1. That's the use regulation schedule. And I think this waiver request is a result that this project's a 40B comprehensive permit. this project's a 40B comprehensive permit. Multi-family dwelling use not permitted in the medium density residential zoning district, which is our 20. A waiver request is hereby made to allow multi-family zoning use in the medium density residential zoning district. Pretty self-explanatory, I think.
Agreed. So I'm going to interrupt you a little bit and just, so Dan, I've gone through these and I've kind of labeled, you know, a lot of them, okay. Maybe I've got a couple of questions on some of them. Some of them, I'm not sure, I guess, I encourage you to speak out as we go through these. If you have any concerns about any of these. I'm kind of relying on you for kind of the bigger picture stuff that maybe I'm not remembering that we typically do or don't do that sort of thing. So please speak up if, as we go through them, if you have any concerns on any of these.
Yeah, I've read through them and I don't actually have any concerns. I thought that the applicant had really scaled back the number, the, the number of requests as well as the substance of the requests.
Okay.
So that, which is great. It sounds like they're complying with most of our bylaws and regulations.
Okay. That, that makes me feel better because I didn't have any concerns either and I thought for sure I was, I was missing something. But I, I do, well, actually I do have a couple of questions. So we'll, we'll go through them. But okay, that's good to hear.
Great. So Mr. Chairman, we won't, how, remind me how the board likes to act on waivers or requests. Would it be part of the final decision or will you actually, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I believe we, I think generally speaking, we probably would have a motion to approve them en masse. If there was something that was perhaps controversial, then maybe we might separate that out. Similar, like you might do a town meeting, put a hold on one particular one.
Sure.
Vote on all the other ones and then have a conversation or vote on whatever one might be controversial or what have you. But, so, but yeah, so I think, I think the goal right now is let's go through them. All talk about, shake out any issues that may or may not exist with any of them. And then we can, you know, kind of circle back, perhaps not even tonight.
Yep.
But at some point we'll circle back and actually vote to approve them or not approve them.
Okay, understood. Well, continue on then if that's the case.
Yep.
The next waiver request is from section 3.3.3.1. Special cases where two or more principal structures are erected on the same lot. Adequacy of access to utility services and drainage serving each structure should be functionally equivalent to that required for separate lots in the planning board's adopted subdivision regulations. The minimum lot area width and frontage shall be the sum of the requirements for each structure. The section does go on, but this is the relevant portion of the section. So the waiver request is to allow four principal structures to be erected on the same lot. The development parcel will contain approximately 7.7 acres, have 403.59 feet of frontage and 416.88 feet of width. So again, this is essentially the result of the project being a 40B.
Yep, okay.
The next waiver request is from section 3.3.3.1. Again, special cases. Minimum distance between each structure shall be the height of the higher building with a maximum of 35 feet. Our waiver request is to allow less than 35 feet and as little as 20 feet. And specifically, this is because of the small lease building. All of the, the four large apartment buildings meet the requirement, but because, you know, where the lease building office is situated, the 35 feet waiver is hereby requested.
Okay.
What did the fire department, did they have a comment on that? I mean, ever since?
They did not have a concern.
Even, well, after Hawaii, I don't, I don't know anymore.
Yeah, so my, my only, my comment was fire department, okay. I didn't even consider the fact that it was only for the lease building. So that, that does change things a bit. And we may, so I, I do think that it's not uncommon for us to actually get a little bit more specific on some of these things. So we may want to add some language on this waiver that is specific to however that building's identified.
Sure.
Right? So that, such that if, if things have to change when you get the final print and suddenly now the big buildings are 20 feet apart, you know, I think that's something we're going to want to review again and probably particularly make sure the fire department's going to be okay with it.
Understood.
So.
Which ones are closest? The rental building?
The rent, he's talking about the rental building.
Leasing office.
Yeah, this, this leasing office building, you know, relative to those two buildings.
And that's a single story building?
Correct.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. Grading wise, it's set to be a walkout, but it's a single, it's a single story building.
We basically just got to specify which buildings.
Somehow, yeah.
They had a, if I may.
Yes.
They had an original question, the fire department, on the ability to get a ladder on that building in, to the windows in the back. Has that been addressed?
Yeah, so we had a very thorough meeting with the fire department, which included the architectural plans. And once they saw the architectural plans, that, that this part and this part of each building is actually you can get from front to back, their concern was, went away.
Okay.
Only thing they asked us to do, and you'll see it on revised plans subsequent to tonight's meeting when we submit, is that a walkway connecting these two open air halls is proposed, which we've done in the revised plans. And the reason for that is if, if they go in, in one, then they can't get back out. They have a walkway to get into the other, other walkway, the other open air walk.
And I know that previously it's come up on other projects is the landscaping being far enough away if they had to put a ladder up against that building to ensure that the landscaping allows for a ladder to be placed properly against the back of that building.
Okay. Yeah, my goal after tonight's meeting.
That was at Apprentice.
Yeah. To specifically ask the fire department to review the revised plans. The revised plans reflect everything that they've asked us to include, which is fairly minimal signage in this walkway. But I will specifically ask them to identify the landscaping because we have a landscaping plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so I was going to comment that it would be good, because the fire department listed specific concerns, it'd be good if you can get in writing from them that those things have been addressed. And it sounds like you're already out in front of that.
Yes.
So it's good. Perfect.
Okay. The next waiver is 4.2.2. Off-street parking for multi-family dwelling units required, requirement of 2.25 spaces per unit. We're requesting a waiver to allow less than that. So we have a correction to what you're seeing in writing is actually 213 spaces proposed. Therefore, the, the proportion is 2.05 spaces per unit. The reason it's 213 is there, there are the spaces that are designated for the public for the open space trails.
Okay. So I'm, I'm okay with that. You know, I, I think that, you know, two seems to be the number that this board traditionally likes to see in these projects. So heads up for some other project you may be involved with. But, so, you know, I, I think, I'm good with that.
I have a question. Are there any visitor spaces designated in the project?
So yes, the fire department asked for those to be signed and indicated. So to the right, to the right of the leasing office, there's three spaces there. I think we're going to call them, you know, future resident spaces. But yeah, they're, they're, they're signed to indicate there.
And where are the handicap spaces?
Handicap spaces are, are here at the front of the, front of the building. So four, four buildings have, and then there's a handicap space for the leasing office.
Are those spaces included in the, in the overall numbers?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Jeff Wallace, Graves Engineering, I just wanted to put the parking count in context for the board. According to the Institute of Traffic Engineers for building uses such as this, the 85th percentile demand, that is 85% of the time, the demand is equal to or less than what I'm going to tell you. The 85th percentile demand, I don't have the actual number, but it runs somewhere. The high 1.6 is say 1.7 to 1.8 parking spaces per dwelling unit. So 85% of the time or less, the demand is less than the 2.05 is proposed. With respect to how many, at 85th percentile demand, how many empty spaces would be available? That would be roughly 0.25 per dwelling unit times 104 dwelling units, about 26 empty spaces throughout the site at the 85th percentile of demand. When I looked at the numbers this way, I felt very comfortable, but I want to share that with the board.
Can I ask a question though on that, Jeff? Because I, I agree that ITE would say 1.7, I think, is the, is the demand for mid-rise structures. But that would assume that these spaces are not assigned to units, I think, right? Because if, if each unit is assigned two spaces, then there really wouldn't be any visitor spaces for people to use. And I think that, that might be a concern, that if there's only three visitor spaces for all these units. So I guess that's the question to the applicant. Are they intending on restricting or assigning these spaces or are they floating so that anybody can use them?
It'd be, it'd be floating. Yeah.
Okay, so, and you're okay if we put that as a condition?
Thank you. I, I am, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, to that point, I agree with you, Dan. If, if two spaces per dwelling unit are assigned, that's a whole different animal. But the numbers I recited are parking demand. It doesn't speak to how the parking spaces are managed. For example, each unit could be maybe assigned one space and all the remainders throughout the site are floating. Chances are there's going to be at least one park, one vehicle per dwelling unit. There's different ways to manage it is my point. And I didn't want to speak to the management part of it.
But I think the point is that we don't want them assigned such that there's no visitor spots, right? So.
Right. They're signed and you can't park there, then no parking, even though there is parking.
Yeah, I like, that's why I like the floating.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I think if I was living there, I'd probably want it that way. But maybe, but anyways.
Funny when you live in a place like this and you pull up and say, someone's in my spot.
Yeah.
Maybe you're an early morning or late night and it's always available, but one time it's not. Yeah, exactly.
If it happened to be fall and more come in, where do they park to screw everything up?
I don't know. The good thing it's a circle anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, it's a difficult question to answer.
I mean, I'm just saying where is the worst place they could park? Because that's where they'll park.
Well, to your point, Peter, the, the, the place they might park is on the perimeter of this access road. And the fire department asks us for no parking signs specifically in that location.
Yeah.
Because that would be an attractive spot of overflow parking.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just the parking provided would, would, you know, kind of built in a buffer for that purpose.
I'm, I'm going to do public comment at the end. So can you try, try to hold that back?
I just wanted to address this one quickly.
Go ahead. Name, you got it, you got it, go to the microphone.
You have to come up to the microphone.
It's, it's really quick, I'm.
My name is Jeff Warff. I live on Peters Way. So what we don't want to happen.
What number, Peters Way?
One. What we don't want to happen is that people are parking on the other streets. Because then if, if somebody's blocking my driveway, I'd have no idea where, how to find them. So that's something that has to be avoided.
No problem. No one would be expected to park on Pleasant Street or Peters Way or Christopher Drive. I mean, this.
And I, I think, I think that our, our history has been that if you're up around that two spots per unit, that you really do have enough parking. You know, I, I stopped in Apprentice Street one Sunday morning. And I think, and I may be wrong in this, but I think Sunday mornings, early Sunday mornings are probably about high level parking, right? You know, people are home for the weekends, they have guests over, that sort of thing. There's one building there, I believe it's fully rented. I think it's a roughly 20 units owned. There was about 20 cars parked there. Right? You know, one, one per unit. So, you know, I, I do believe that having two spots per unit is, is, is a good number. And I'm, this member of the board is very comfortable with that, that number. I don't think we're going to have a problem with parking in this spot, in this location.
Okay, move on. The next waiver is from section 4.2.3.3. No parking area serving a multi-family dwelling, not swelling, shall be located nearer to any lot line than the distance specified as minimum yards in the intensity of use schedule, nor shall be located in the area to the front of the building line. So this is, again, probably more of a result that this is a 40B perhaps, but also, so waivers is requested to allow parking to be located closer to the side and rare lot lines than the distance is specified a minimum yards for the underlying zoning in this district and to allow parking to be located in front of the building line. So with parking proposed, you know, here between the street and the building, these two buildings, again, is part of the nature of that request. And primarily, really, because, I don't, I, and maybe this is one we want to specify, because I'm kind of seeing it now myself. We probably want to specify we actually are within any side yard or side or rail lot line setbacks.
Yep.
Do you recall? Is that, I don't see that we are. So we could, this could be on the list of waivers to specify that it is exclusively just in front of the building line.
Yep, then let's do it.
And a, a review of the waivers that you seek to be reviewed by the fire department?
Yeah, I made a note.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, moving on. Section 4.2.4.5. Parking areas containing more than five spaces shall include or be bordered by at least one tree of two inch caliper for every five spaces. So we're requesting to allow required trees to be placed as depicted on the landscaping plan and allow parking spaces to be bordered partially by proposed landscaping and partially by a concrete sidewalk where access to the buildings is required. So the nature of this request is because the space between the parking and the building, I believe by your bylaw is supposed to be landscape, some communities would consider a sidewalk part of the landscaping feature. There's landscaping and hardscaping. So, but to be specific, you know, because of the sidewalk that runs along the face of these buildings, I just wanted to include it as a waiver.
Okay.
I think it's a very robust landscaping plan. We have, you know, this, this illustration does actually generally depict a landscaping plan. I could pull it up. But, you know, we have landscape bylaws at the ends of these, each of these rows, landscape bylaw in between, again, landscape bylaw, landscape bylaw, generally meet the landscaping requirements. It's, it's a little tricky with that walkway, required walkway in the front of the building between the parking and the building.
Yep. Seems reasonable.
Section 4.4.2.1.1. Electric signs are not permitted within any residential district or the village mixed use district. Waiver to allow an electric sign at the entrance of the project. So this is a throw it against the wall type waiver request. I don't know what an electric sign is, but if we have a light, that's, you know, an exterior illuminated sign that's powered by electricity, is that an electric sign? Probably not, but worthy of discussion if, you know, I don't think we're proposing a neon project sign, but it will be illuminated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you proposed the sign yet?
I'm sorry, Dan?
Have you proposed the sign? Do we have a spec sheet for the sign?
We don't actually.
No, not this time.
I mean, if, maybe you could do that before the hearing closes and then we can just wipe, address that, check that off the list.
Yeah, I guess some type of designation. I'm not even too sure at this point what I'm actually going to call, call, call the development. But I think we could work out some type of, you know, sign, sign detail. I have an idea what I would do anyway.
I don't think it should be blanket.
Yeah, now I understand. So I, I just had a question mark next to it because I wasn't sure. And they used to talk about externally illuminated signs. But as I'm looking in this, I don't see that terminology used anymore. And they did a rewrite on the whole sign section a while back. And actually, did, did they maybe get away from externally illuminated signs?
I, I guess I'm good, oh, yeah.
I've, section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw, page, section two, page 12, has a definition of electric sign. And it reads, "Any sign which is internally illuminated by incandescent or fluorescent lamps, light emitting diodes, electric luminescent material, luminous bulbs or other means of converting electricity into light." So I think you have a very clear definition of what the electric sign is.
Okay.
And, and what, to shorten it all up, looks to me like it's internally illuminated. So that's the definition of electric signs. And if they're proposing externally illuminated, Mr. Chairman, I see the, externally illuminated sign does not meet the definition of electric sign in this bylaw.
So here's my thing. This is, you know, this is still a residential neighborhood. Bill's going to yell at me for not talking into the mic?
Yep.
This is, sorry, Bill. This is still a residential. This is, sorry, Bill. This is still a residential neighborhood. I'm not big on having an electric sign, a lit sign out on the street. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. I think if we're on the, on the finish line of the final set of plans, I think out in front, most likely in the landscape feature, most likely I'll propose a stone wall, a piece of stone wall, and most, whatever, whatever it's going to be called would be probably like metal letters on the stone wall, embedded in the stone wall, and then I'll have uplighted LED lighting shining on it. So that's what the sign would be. I don't, you know, it's not like a McDonald's sign or anything like that. It'd be very tasteful, obviously.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's the answer. Let's get it, let's get it.
We'll do a detail, and we can work that out. Number of characters on a stone wall, I don't know what I'm going to call it, but, you know, so high, and, you know, I won't do something five feet tall or anything like that. I'll do a, sketch a detail out, and we can include it in the conditions.
Good idea.
So let's consider this one struck for now?
Yeah, hold.
Yeah, or at the very least, a hold, you know, and let's see if it's, if it's even necessary.
Okay, great, agreed. Next waiver, 4.4.3.3.5. "During construction of a subdivision of multifamily dwelling development, one freestanding sign no greater than 12 square feet may be erected on the premises at the entrance of said development." So, again, during construction, so we request a waiver to allow construction sign up to 32 square feet, which is a kind of a standard eight-by-four sheet of plywood during construction. There's information that, you know, that it's kind of important and necessary for signs like that during construction. There's all sorts of, you know, SWIP and NITD's ID numbers, conservation numbers, emergency contact information, and-
For rent.
For rent?
Yeah, mo-most importantly.
That's what he was gonna say.
I'm fine with that.
Section 5.2.2.1. "There should be at least 5,500 square feet of land for each dwelling unit proposed to be placed on a lot, as far as the category of this project being a 40B, in my opinion." So we're requesting a waiver to allow the construction of 104 units on, you know, what we're calling Development Parcel, which is 7.7 acres. That equates to 3,225 square feet per unit. If we were to apply the 5,500 square feet times 104 units, that'd be 13.13 acres. We could play this game of the whole parcel, and we'd be very close to the 5,500, or, but, you know, conservatively, we're saying the Development Parcel, which reduces the, I guess, the density of the dwelling units per square foot of land.
What's the whole parcel?
12.8. About 12.8, 12.5.
So Steve, what's the density now? You ran it by it really fast. What is, what's the number?
Well, if we use the development area, Dan, which is 7.7 acres, it brings it, brings it to 3,225 square feet per unit.
3,225?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a section of the bylaw that this board has quite often studied carefully with respect to projects, 40B projects. And this was a major sticking point with the Flint, the, not Flint Pond, Sotier's other project.
Prentice.
Prentice Place, right.
But, you know, I think there was issues at Prentice that, you know, that were kind of driving that. I mean, you know, I think at this location, all things considered, this member of the board is okay with the 104 units. All things considered. So I'm okay with that number, 3225.
Okay, I'll keep moving. "Section 5.2.2.1. "Each building shall not exceed 140 feet in any direction. Waiver is requested to allow the buildings to have lengths of 153 feet and 176 feet 8 inches." So the, you'll see, buildings, design-wise, these two buildings were identified in this plan as one and two, have a smaller footprint, so those are 153 feet in length. These buildings, which would, I'm sorry, this is the third building of this size, I apologize. Three buildings of that size would be 153 feet in length. The larger building footprint is because it would contain two and three-bedroom dwelling units is 176 feet and 8 inches, more or less.
Yep.
Why do we have a zoning bylaw that says 140 feet? Where did that number come from? Any idea?
It's been there a long time. That's, I have no idea where it came from.
I guess if there was a project someday, and someone signed, got a citizen's petition and put a limit on it.
Well, it does happen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Or it did happen, stuff like that.
Section 5.2.2.3. "Adjacent to and for the length of each side and rear lot line, there should be a 15-foot-wide area of landscaping. We're requesting a waiver to allow no landscaping on the northern side lot line within this 15-foot-wide area, because there is a 25-foot-wide drainage easement along the length of that northern lot line, and landscaping in this area would not be permitted. Landscaping is proposed along a portion of this drainage easement near the northern side, between the parking spaces and the property line. But again, because of the easement that literally runs in this green space, planting within it would affect the function of the easement." Reason for the waiver.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that, as long as, you know, we do specify, as you forgot here, the northern lot line, et cetera.
Okay. Section 7.5E. "Within the water supply protection overlay district, not more than 25% or 5,000 square feet, whichever is greater, of any lot area shall be rendered impervious. The remainder shall be retained as unoccupied space, free of all buildings, parking, pavement, including street access, drives, and walks, and other conditions rendering the land's surface impervious. Except that the inspector of buildings may, after consultation with the town engineer and the conservation commission, allow up to 75% of the lot to be rendered impervious." Everyone, do I need to keep reading?
Nope.
Okay. So we're requesting a waiver to allow more than 25% or 5,000, whichever is greater, of the lot to be rendered impervious. Upon conveyance of the open space parcel to the town of Grafton, the remaining Development Parcel of 7.7 acres would calculate to be 41%. Now, we all know that the open space parcel would be open space in perpetuity, could only imagine. So if we were to include that open space area in the calculation, we're like 25.4. So it's-
Could I ask a question on this?
Yep.
Bill?
Yeah.
So I know at the last hearing, Bill, you had made a comment that if the water district was okay with this, then, then you were okay with it. I did see the email from Matt Pearson, but I didn't see any discussion in his email about, about this, this requirement or the water, water supply protection district. I don't even know if he's aware of it, aware that this project implicates that bylaw. Has there been any discussion with the water district about this waiver request, to our knowledge?
I personally have not. I've had multiple conversations with Matt, but I can't say that I specifically talked about this issue. It's something I can call him tomorrow. But the conservation was aware, even though it's not necessarily their jurisdiction, they usually have some, some influence and concern over something like that. And they were okay because they saw the numbers in the open space. But I can't say the water district specifically is, Dan.
Okay.
But given how, you know, we're handling these waivers, I'm happy to just dot that i and cross that t.
I think it would be helpful if we had something in writing from, from the district saying that they've, they've considered this, this issue, and they don't have a concern. It would be, it would be nice for the board to have that, if the board was inclined to waive this.
Yeah, Matt's been very responsive, so I'll call him tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
With respect to this, I remember at the last public hearing, Mr. Yeoman's raised concern about all the eggs in one or two baskets with the two open stormwater basins. And I gave that some more thought after the last public hearing I was at here. And this, that issue does also pertain to the waiver request we're speaking of now. Basically, it's underlying pervious material, lot of, lot of recharge, and now it's, even though the hydrologies, when we look at the volumes of surface runoff, they're basically going down, which means there's infiltration occurring. But that's if everything worked properly. And a solution could be to better replicate the dispersal of recharge across the site by not only relying on the two open infiltration basins, but also by providing some roof recharge from some of the buildings elsewhere on the site, under the impervious areas, so that not all the eggs are in two baskets with respect to infiltration, but clean roof runoff could be recharged, for example, between the buildings or out toward the front of the site where a lot of impervious area is, is being added. And these underground recharge systems are very common, and they certainly don't have to be sized to hold and retain in the 100-year storm event, because the open basins are already there. But these subsurface systems could be sized to better replicate the more frequent small storm events that do provide a lot of annual recharge. And, for example, they could be sized for a two-year storm event with overflows tied into the site's drainage system. And in my experience, they would better replicate distribution of infiltration across the site.
So you're talking cultechs under the-
Certainly.
Under the pavement?
Could be cultechs, could be perforated pipe and stone.
Okay.
They have the groundwater offset, they have the pervious materials. It just spreads out water. And we've come across this on a few reviews we've done with those large million-square-foot distribution facilities that were former gravel pits that are, you know, conducive to impervious, and is tucked in the front or at the low areas, one or two open basins, and we've tried to replicate it that way. This certainly is a much smaller scale, but the same principle applies.
I think that's a great idea, Jeff. And I was actually kind of surprised that that wasn't on the plan, because I, most of the projects that I see do have distributed roof runoff recharge systems, like, like you're describing. So I think that makes perfect sense here. And I'm assuming it's not a major cost item for, for the project.
Considering everything else that money's being spent on, I think it's pretty, pretty small. And especially where, again, I would not advocate for attenuating the 100-year storm events with these, but just trying to better replicate the more frequent storm events.
I mean, at first glance, we'll have to talk about with the applicant, but at first glance, it seems there are some areas of opportunity that would be, you know, pretty feasible, you know, even without under-pavement cultechs, which can be, you know, the higher end cost-wise of, of a system. But, you know, there's, there's some pretty significant, you know, green space between buildings and surrounding parking areas. I think we could come up with something that's pretty feasible, especially, like, to your point, the smaller storm, more frequent smaller storms that really encourage, you know, that frequent recharge. So, yeah, we'll chat about it and-
Will conservation require that anyways?
They have not, you know, because really, you know, by and large, the buildings are out of the buffer zone. I mean, a portion of that, portion of this building, back, back portions in the buffer zone. You know, recharge is for the roofs is accounted for. There's, you know, we have roof drainage into the piping system. But to Jeff's point, the recharge is occurring in the basins and not separately.
Mr. Yeoman's?
Yeah, I think the point you make is bringing more water into the, the building area, the parking area, for it to go down into soil that's very, very sandy. So it's going to dissipate some of that building water before it even gets to the, the retention basins. And with that thought in mind, if, as I read the notes, I think, Dan, we had talked about Scott Horsley coming in and looking at the hydrology, the impacts on groundwater ponds, and, and the hydrologist review at the meeting that we had on the, on June 15th. And Echotech, and again, I'm just looking at the notes of that meeting. Echotech, it's outside the scope of Echotech, and I think Echotech came in and presented.
Bill, get closer to your mic.
Oh, excuse me. I think Echotech had come in, but have we contacted Scott Horsley? Has anything been done to have him in to look at the hydrology of the site, which takes into consideration what was just reviewed by the, by Jeff?
So, no, we haven't. I think that's something that, you know, generally speaking, if we're going to bring in a peer review, that's something that would be discussed and agreed upon by the board. I mean, we don't formally vote on bringing in Jeff or even a, you know, the traffic review, but in theory, the board should be deciding as a board to bring, to request a peer review of whatever. And we have not done that for this particular, bringing in someone like Scott Horsley in a manner as you're talking about. So, no, nothing has been done in that regards, because we haven't decided as a board that we want to do that. I mean, you know, you brought it up.
Right.
And we had other things that were on our plate at that point in time, and we reviewed them. But, you know, I don't want to derail the waivers discussion right now.
Right.
We want to talk about that after we get through these, and then we can talk about that. But, you know, I'd like to try and stay on, on point for the waivers at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, to try to stay on point with the waivers, as part of our hydrology review, surface water runoff, the data that I can glean from the, from the, from the hydrology modeling is not only peak rates and types of ground cover and all the other boring stuff us engineers look at, but it's the volume of surface water runoff. And I look at that just the opposite. What's the, how, how is groundwater recharge affected by the changes in pre-development versus post-development? Not peak rates of runoff, but volumes runoff. So please understand that my review found that there is an, I forget if there was a reduction in volumes of runoff, pre to post, because there's so much infiltration, or if it was about a balance. But either way, I wasn't concerned that there was a significant change in, in increase in volumes of runoff, which would tell me it's surface water runoff coming out of the basins, going to the ponds, which is what we're trying to avoid by way of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. So I looked at the hydrology to that effect. We don't get into, once it gets into the ground, where does it go, and groundwater hydrology movement. I have a background in that, a weak background, but it's, it's stronger than most engineers that do deal with hydrology. But again, I look at the surface water hydrology and stop at pre-development, not only rates but volumes. And I'm comfortable with the amount of recharge. I'm just trying to get the eggs in more baskets.
To your point, Mr. Chair, perhaps, you know, I don't want that to get in the way of reviewing all the waivers. To, you know, as I would yell out at town meeting, let's put a hold on that, and, you know, have further discussion on that. But it was brought up in the name Horsley and the hydrology, and then the point you bring up. I just think it needs to be reviewed further, in light of, you know, my thoughts. Thank you.
Good answer. So the waiver request bring us to Article 25, General Wetlands Protection Bylaw. At the time of application, the applicant shall pay a filing fee specified in the regulation to the Commonwealth. Just, I don't need to keep reading, I don't believe. The waiver is requested not to require an additional filing fee, specifically because filing fee was made to the ZBA for this overall package, and you're handling it, you know, under the umbrella of comprehensive permit.
You don't want us to double dip?
Well said.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. General Bylaw is Article 36, Stormwater Management Bylaw. Grafton Conservation Commission is established on the MGL, Chapter 40, subsection 8C, shall have the authority to administer this bylaw. Commission shall administer, implement, and enforce the bylaw. Any powers granted to our duties imposed by the Conservation Commission may be delegated in writing by the Conservation Commission to its employees or agents. A waiver to allow the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals to have the authority to administer, implement, and enforce the bylaw. Any permit required pursuant to this bylaw shall be incorporated to the comprehensive permit.
And this is only the Grafton bylaw, right?
That's correct.
Is the ConCom stays responsible for the state?
Yes, correct.
Yep. Okay.
Regulations for the administration of the Grafton Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Section 1, Fee Schedule. Permit fees shall be paid at the time of the application. Check if you may be able to town Grafton. Waiver to not require a filing fee under the Wetlands Protection Bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on this particular matter, the, the regulations were actually updated in May of 2017. matter, the, the regulations were actually updated in May of 2017. They were adopted May 28th, 2013, I believe, somewhere in the document, but nevertheless, the latest regulations in effect outdated May 2017.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
And on the next one, well, I've got the floor. The regulations governing stormwater management were actually updated in October 2021, but they still bear the date of May 28th, 2013. It's a little confusing, but do know there is a different set of regulations with, with the correct date as cited in the waiver request, but they were actually issued in October of 2021. I don't know how to straighten that out.
Doesn't change the contents of the, the regulation, correct? This is the latest?
If it's got to do with waiver fees, it probably does not.
Okay.
But I
Can I ask a question to Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jeff, what, what is triggering the Stormwater Management Bylaw applicability here? Is it?
Um, I believe it's over an acre of disturbance.
Okay.
There's a few different, they're well over the threshold of whatever, whatever.
Yep. Okay, so that's totally independent of the fact that this is wetland jurisdiction. So this, even if there's no wetlands anywhere in the site, we would still be reviewing the stormwater plans and requiring compliance basically with the state's stormwater standards, right?
When, with respect to the local, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted. I went from, from wetland regulations to stormwater management. We're still back in wetland, sorry, Bill. Mr. Chairman, do you want to direct traffic on this one?
I'm lost at this point.
Dan's asking me a question about the, about the waiver request we haven't gotten to yet because we're back at wetlands and he's talking stormwater.
But, yeah, let's, let's, all right, let's get back on point. So I think we're in the one, the middle of this page.
Which one are we doing?
This one.
Middle of the page.
Wetlands Protection Bylaw. All right, and it's just a wa- waiver of the fees. And I think there's no issues with that, right? Okay.
These fees just go to Grafton, but the state ones still you have to pay.
Yeah, the town portion of the state and the state portion of the state have been paid. But this is the bylaw fee above and beyond the state portions.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you say. I had to look at the wording a little bit, but it says, you know, waiver to not require filing fees in addition to that required by the Wetland Protection Act. So they'll pay the Wetland Protection Act, but they're looking for waiver for anything in addition to that. All right, so now we're on to regulations governing stormwater management.
Correct. So I'll read the waiver and then we can have discussion. First waiver request, the Grafton Conservation Commission is designated as the administering authority under the Stormwater Management Bylaw. Waiver to allow the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals to be the administering authority under the Stormwater Management Bylaw. Any permit required pursuant to this bylaw shall be incorporated into the comprehensive permit.
That I think is fairly straightforward, isn't it?
Yes.
So what are we going to administer? I don't understand.
The Stormwater Bylaw. Yeah, I mean, isn't that?
What the hell do we know about it?
Well, that's why we have him.
So instead of conservation going, we'll probably have Jeff do it, is that what you?
Isn't that how it's always worked?
Well, yeah, the, the commission, if they do any inspections, they call us when they need us. And that's whether it's the stormwater related or the wetlands, wetlands permitting related. The stormwater bylaw, the local bylaw, basically what it does for the commission is it allows the commission to have jurisdiction over stormwater related issues if a development project is sufficient, meets a certain criteria, land disturbance area or volume of earth movement. And it gives them jurisdiction outside the resource areas that they only have jurisdiction for under the Wetlands Protection Act. So most larger projects, single families don't usually trigger it unless they're a long driveway or go over an acre of disturbance, not land area, but disturbance. The local bylaws do have some stronger teeth than what the Mass DEP Stormwater Regulations require in that the local stormwater regulations require a much greater amount of rainfall to be modeled in the hydrology calculations. The project applicant's team has, has used those numbers instead of the lesser numbers on, required under the Wetland Protection Act. The local bylaws also require more treatment than is required under the Mass DEP. And they also require what's now called total phosphorus, treatment for total phosphorus. And this project meets the higher total suspended solids requirement, removal requirement, and meets the total phosphorus removal requirements. So they've, those are the bigger items. And as far as when it comes to constructing, what are they doing? The infrastructure is the same infrastructure we'd see on other projects, so nothing's changed there. They did maybe have to add another treatment unit of some sort in, in series, and if I remember right, two of those ponds are in series. It's things like that that get them the, that higher level of total suspended solids removal, and it's the retention of a certain amount of runoff to these two large infiltration basins that gets them the total phosphorus removal. Again, those are teeth that the commission usually has now in the local regulations, but just like any other local regulation that comes to this board for the 40B.
Yep. Okay.
I think it'd be different if we were asking for a lot more waivers under the bylaw.
Agreed.
But really more of administrative type waivers. So the final waiver request is section 5 under the Stormwater Management Regulations. Conservation Commission should obtain each submission application fee, so a waiver for the fee. And that concludes the waiver requests.
All right. So, I mean, we had one that was struck somewhere, the electric sign, or, or maybe it's a hole. And then there's definitely one that's on hold, which is the
3331.
The Water District.
Section 75E.
The WSPOD one.
Yep.
All right, so those are really the only issues.
I'll specify which buildings too. The third one.
For the separation.
Yeah, all right, so yes, there's some edits.
Yep.
Yeah, on a few of them. I'm not necessarily noting those right now, but yes, that's 33, 3331. All, all in all, you know, I, you know, I appreciate the fact that it's a much simpler and smaller list. I think it makes it, you know, fairly easier to kind of proceed with. So any other thoughts or comments from anyone on any of these waivers?
So are you using granite curbing and all that in there?
The, we, on the design plans, we've accounted for a vertical curb. I, you know.
I mean, what, what does planning boards say? Because you haven't asked for a waiver if you're using asphalt or?
Yeah. I mean, on
I mean, most likely it's going to be vertical curb. Yes, granite.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say
Probably four inch vertical granite.
Other projects.
Yep.
Where, you know, when, when the applicant owns projects like this, the granite, just more durable, it's more attractive.
For plowing and ease of, ease of plowing and things like that.
You're doing vertical out on Pleasant Street, correct? Yeah, that's
Yes, yeah, that was requested.
Vertical granite, I think, yeah. And concrete drainage pipe?
Uh, no, HDPE.
I think you got to ask for a waiver.
Okay, might slip bias. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, it's I, it, this is an interesting point that, that Peter just raised, and I, I don't remember in prior projects, have we reviewed the project's conformity with the subdivision regulations, design standards? Obviously, it's not a subdivision, but in other 40B projects that I work on, even, even for condo projects, we still look at the, the design standards in the subdivision regulations to see how much the project conforms or doesn't conform. I'm not sure if we've done that in the past with other projects in Grafton, but there may, there may be specific standards in the planning board's regulations that we want to make, see whether this project meets those or not, including drainage, curbing, radii, you know, issues like that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Dan is correct that the subdivision rules and regulations are applied to the, to the multifamily dwellings under section five point something of the zoning bylaw. Those have typically been, in my experience, on the 40A side, if there's a linear road, for example, the entrance to Flint Pond Estates, we would apply the horizontal and vertical geometry and alignment and look at the design stopping site distance, you know, vertical alignments with respect to stopping site distances and so forth. And the subdivision rules and regulations, certainly for all the 40As and the 40Bs I've been involved with, apply to the construction materials with respect to gravel thickness, pavement thicknesses and so forth. And I understand the 40As do the same thing. I know I've been reviewing that way for the long-term durability to the app, to the project as a whole. And I did go through a review of this. We don't have the linear type of driveway that I could look at, vertical alignment, it just doesn't exist. So I did look at the leveling zone at the stop condition at Pleasant Street, you know, satisfied with the grade there. I was satisfied with the pavement thicknesses, gravel thickness and so forth. Then when we get to curbing around the buildings, that's been kind of a gray area. The subdivision rules and regs do allow both batuminous cape card berm, which is not conducive to the sidewalks being up against the paved parking areas or otherwise granite curbing. The most important thing with respect to that is vertical, whether the material's batuminous, which there was some batuminous in Flint Pond Estates, or granite or concrete. Again, Mr. Boardman's point, granite's going to be the most durable with loaders and plows going through there. It's also going to be the most corrosion resistant with respect to salts used and being in the gutter flow. Sidewalks, sidewalks have, there's going to be some corrosion over time with sidewalks, but nevertheless, I feel comfortable having reviewed these plans myself that, and I did look at the subdivision rules and regs as I could apply them to this project under section 5 of the zoning bylaw that, that's been addressed.
So, you know, to Dan's point, we absolutely have gotten involved with, with the subdivision rules and regs and, and, you know, we've granted waivers for various things that are in those regs. And, you know, I guess I'll just say to the applicant, the philosophy of this board has always been, if you haven't asked for a waiver, then you, you don't get it, right? And even if it's on the print, you know, if, if there's, if there's not necessarily a waiver for it, then, then, you know, you don't necessarily, you don't, you don't get it. So, you know, maybe you guys need to just make sure you go through, it sounds like Jeff's already done it to some extent, but you need to go through it and, and make sure there's nothing in there. And even things like, you know, concrete pipe versus plastic or what have you. I mean, you know, I, I don't know what's actually in the, our, our, our rules and regs, but, you know, if, you know, if it says concrete and your intention was plastic, then, you know, you're not going to get a waiver. You don't, because you haven't asked for it.
Yeah, so we're calling a conversation with the applicant's counsel and says that, and he explicitly said, this is not a subdivision. And that's his position, and I think, because, you know, initially when I'm preparing the waiver list, and it includes, you know, it's six, seven, eight more pages because of subdivision regulations and, you know, conferred with him and
But I, I, I think
But if your position is historically that, what you state, you know, then first thing we'll do is we'll look to see if, if there's a handful and they're simple, it's probably not worth arguing about if
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think I agree, this is not a subdivision, but I think is, and Jeff kind of alluded to this, I think we can agree this is a multifamily development.
It is a multifamily development.
Right? And, and my recollection, and we, because we've kind of been through this before, is that the multifamily rules and regulations pull in the subdivision.
Okay.
So, no, it's not a subdivision, but those, those rules get pulled in, so.
Yeah. Well, absolutely. So just be prepared, Steve, because there's going to be a lot of reading going on if we're getting rid of things from the subdivision, you know.
Yeah.
regs. There's going to be a lot of reading for that because a lot of it's going bye-bye.
Yeah, right. There's a lot of things that aren't applicable, you know.
Well
But how do you, you know, it's always tricky in my experience when you have a potentially not applicable section of subdivision, right? Do you waive it or is it understood that it's not applicable because it's not?
I would think it's not, it's not applicable.
Yeah.
And what, and, and materials that are designated on the approved set of plans that have been witnessed by the DPW and all the boards in town, obviously, if it shows that hand core, you know, HDP or equivalent concrete specs, you would think that that would be okay too, it's shown on the approved plan.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know that we've actually gotten into that situation. I think, you know, we've encouraged that, you know, we want to make sure we've had the discussion.
Sure.
Where we're headed, right? So, you know, you know, I, I, to be honest, I don't know how we would handle it. I mean, you know, we, we did have a situation where, you know, one set of plants had concrete and then the final ones all of a sudden, plastic appeared.
Sure, yeah.
You know, that, that was a problem. You know, but I think it's more along the lines of we just, you know, we want to make sure we have the discussion and we, you know, we're transparent about it, right? So, yeah, I mean, if something's not applicable, I don't, I don't think we need to waive it.
Sure.
It's not applicable.
Yeah.
But, you know, certainly if, if, you know, the regulations say you have to do X and, and you fully intend to, you know, not, and you want to do Y, then I, I think that that should be something that's, that's exposed and discussed.
Mr. Chair, did we do this for Prentice Place? Did we go?
I believe so.
It's a similar
Absolutely.
There's no roads, but it's a similar type project, a little bit
I, I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, then it would be the same.
Yeah, I think we've done it for Prentice, for Craftsman, for, for Flint Pond, I mean
Yeah.
Is a difference between, between this, this is a, is a parking lot with four buildings, I mean, in my opinion.
Like Prentice Place is a parking lot with three buildings.
Stop and Shop, can they, a place like the whole Stop and Shop facility, Hunter, what's the street? Could they use plastic pipe in that parking lot without asking anybody?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, they could use it without asking anybody because they don't fall under the multifamily regulations where I believe the multi, I know the multifamily regulations used to specifically address subdivision rules and regs.
Is that for roads and multifamily or apartment complexes?
That's a good question. We've tried to, we've applied, again, pavement thicknesses and gravel thicknesses, the big, the road section or the parking lot section's always been the biggest concern. Past planners have told me they don't want to get calls a few years into the project that the pavement's crumbling. So that's been applied. And that, in the case of Stop and Shop, well, you know, there's, there's nothing that, that I'm, I recall in commercial development and part of the zoning bylaw that brings back the subdivision rules and regs with, with respect to anything, especially pavement thicknesses.
Yeah.
Multifamily, to the best of my knowledge, used to, and I'm going through section 5.1 and 5.2, and I'm not finding it, but I'm sitting here in a meeting buzzing through it real fast, so I, I can't say conclusively.
I think we've been here before, though.
We have. We have. Without a doubt with all the different 40Bs I've worked with this board on, and I can't remember, High Point was, was approved and designed before I came on board.
And that's a subdivision.
That's a subdivision, so that would have been 100%
Right.
Meet subdivision rules and regulations. And I, and I can say, my knowledge of Grafton, the subdivision rules and regulations do say reinforce concrete pipe unless you request a waiver. And I do know high density polyethylene drainage pipe has been used on other 40B projects with a waiver.
And Mr. Chairman, the state, the state 40B regulations actually specifically state that boards can look at their subdivision rules and regulations and apply those kind of road design or, or pavement thickness and those types of design standards to 40B projects that may not necessarily be subdivisions because they recognize that in a lot of towns, they don't even have regulations for these types of projects. I mean, Grafton does, but Grafton's, Grafton has a lot of multifamily housing. A lot of towns have none. But in any event, the regulations actually do contemplate and allowed, allow zoning boards to look at those subdivision regulations. So I, I don't, I don't know who, which lawyer you're, you're referring to, Steve, but I, I don't agree with that opinion. I, I think that's just wrong. And historically, most towns that I worked with, even when I'm on other sides of, of the aisle, almost every zoning board that I've worked, worked with or been in front of does look at subdivision regulations, even in the context of multifamily projects, not necessarily because they're applicable, but just so they have an idea of things like road, pavement thickness, churning radii, the types of issues that we want to be, that we are concerned about for public safety and, and environmental protection.
Mr. Boardman?
We're more than happy to review, you know, design standards, you know, in regards to the subdivision
to the subdivision, of course. This is a private community as well. Jeff has already extensively, extensively looked at all the drainage calculations, the entire, you know, project. So I'm sure what we have proposed on our plans adhere to it, but we're happy to review some of those to see if, you know, what we, we can do. And Paul's off, obviously happy with if we need to change something. As, as, as with the water company itself, sometimes you got to remember some towns have regs from 1952 and they're, it's the old, it's the old way. And there's new ways and methods that they're approved, so we have no problems looking back and seeing what applies to our particular project.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have a question from somebody.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to public input in a bit.
Okay, yeah.
The question's not from one of us, right?
Nope.
Were you? Okay. All right, so waivers, there may be some more, is what I'm hearing. You take a look. Any other comments from, from the board as far as waivers go? All right, anyone in the room want to say anything with respect to waivers? Okay, why don't, why don't we recognize whoever's got their hand up?
So it's from Kelly Majewski at 60 Pleasant Street. She wants to know if the project's gonna affect any drainage or the catch basins along Pleasant Street.
In my opinion, no. Whatever's in Pleasant Street now, it will not affect the current drainage system in Pleasant Street, certainly not on the opposite side of Pleasant Street from this project. On the, by the way, for the record, this is Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering, Engineering Consultant, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Back to Pleasant Street drainage with respect to the new sidewalk along the project side of the street? Yes, the sidewalk would affect drainage, however, the applicant and his team are proposing drainage catch basins to capture the runoff that's gonna be blocked by the sidewalk and convey it onto the project site through the, through this stormwater system.
Wasn't there drainage going under the street to the other side of the street? And didn't, wasn't there actually an improvement made to that?
Steve would remember, yes, there is drainage, the improvement Steve can speak to.
Yeah, correct, Mr. Chairman. So there's a culvert under Pleasant Street now, and what we're doing is we're collecting the water from that, from that culvert, and then we're carrying it through into the drainage system after it's allowed to, you know, kind of quasi pond here, but, you know, you will get a lot of infiltration and recharge as well, like we continue to get now, but there's a mechanism for it to, to be captured and flow, and, and flow through. And then the, because we're installing a curb and a sidewalk, water that currently floods One Peter's Way and also a corner of the subject premises will be collected in that catch basin and piped into the same network.
Is that a new catch basin or is it existing?
This is a new catch basin, yeah, because right now it runs off the road edge of pavement, there's no curb, and that's what contributes to the flooding, predominantly contributes to the flooding of the rear of One Peter's Way. Curbing and sidewalk will cause a block.
So I think, so I think the, you know, the answer to the question is actually, it is affecting, it's improving.
Improving, yes.
I would agree.
I have a question relative to that. Has that flow been considered in your calculations?
It's been considered in their calc, their calculations and reviewed by me.
And reviewed by you.
I'm comfortable very-
The existing flow that's there now, that they're going to capture, and it, it'll be in their drainage system going into the retention basins, okay.
Yeah, in the first round of project documents, it was not quantified. It was known to exist, but not quantified, and it was taken care of after they made an effort, a more detailed effort to figure out what was going on over there, because it was-
To your satisfaction.
Absolutely, to my satisfaction, yep, yep.
No, no other questions, nobody?
No, no other questions, that was it.
Okay, what do we want to get to next? We've gone through the waivers. Was there architectural stuff you wanted to go over, or is that premature?
Architecture, I think.
Sure, yeah.
I'm not trying to force that issue, I just-
Oh, no.
I thought you were mentioning it at the last meeting.
No, I think it's important that, you know, we get your opinion and input on where we stand with architecture, because I know that was an issue from the start.
So I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Hold on, let me do it.
This is something I can sit back and listen in on.
You should be able to go now, Clay.
Yep.
Because I gave it.
Nice, nice and easy this time, good.
Okay, as you, as you, as everybody could remember, when we first came to the first meeting, there was, when we were working with the lit process, you know, some of the architectural style came into play of how build, you know, tall the buildings would be and things like that. And we were actually moving towards a, a little bit of a modern approach, and of course, we heard from the, the residents that it, you know, kind of doesn't blend into the community, never mind apartment, you know, community being in that particular area of Colonials. So what we did do, and I think we were submitted it maybe, you know, a couple of weeks ago, because we've been busy dealing with other matters, is actually a, a new design. So if you can remember the rendering of the flat roof before, actually. So we're abandoning that for everybody on, on board, okay?
Good job, Clay.
That ties, that ties into the whole municipal impact, this thing. And what we have right now is, is a new community. So there's several architectural aspects in this particular building design. It caters to more of a farmhouse kind of trend. It has a board and batten siding. It also has the third level, as you can see how the third level's actually somewhat like blacked out. That's a, a design technique to try to eliminate the height of, of the buildings themselves. And it's a play with using the roof lines and a parapet up top, and it's, it's, it's somewhat of a movie set to a certain degree, where, as you notice, some of the, like the HVAC units on the, the last, I think that other development, I should say, doesn't look that great.
No.
This one's actually hidden, so they're all on the roof on this particular style, but they're hidden by a, a parapet that looks like a roof contour. So it's great from on ground. Then there's other details with this, as, as we talked about before, the design of these buildings are actually, there's no internal hallways as you think there's apartment community, apartment community, you don't go up an elevator. The gabled portions, maybe Steve can point to them, yep, right in there, those are like a breezeway, an open breezeway unit. So you'd come from your home, you come in, and then there's four doors on the lower level, and it says stairs all, all lit up. And so it's all, it's all a breezeway right through it. So it's a unique design, it's a little bit more private to, for people, rather than having a hall. It, it's a little bit, you know, feels homey, and it's, 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 it's a, it's a great design, we feel it's a great design. With even, there's little plays, you probably can't see it, but there's sliding, faux sliding like barn doors, actually. So they don't move, but they're there. So it's, it's a play again on, on the theme. So as you can see, you know, with the gables, the, on, on the sides of the units, the play of the darker units on the third floor to, to mimic the roofs and the roofing assemblies, the darker colors to there, we think it's a huge, huge difference. And if Clay brings you to the next side, we've, we've got some images, and of course, they're not 100%, they're conceptual in images in a 3D design we had done in-house. It's hard to see on the, on the, on, oh, that one's okay, that's the first one. Okay, so as you can see, that's what the elevation looked like, so it's a far cry difference from that, that first one that we had. That one just screams, you know, kind of farmhouse, kind of classical, kind of like a revival, so it's-
But you have doors on those now, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, those are faux, those are faux doors that don't move, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's just, it looks like a barn door, but it doesn't move.
So I think the answer to your question though is, no.
You just walk right through.
It's open.
It's open, the doors are open.
Clay, where, oh, the barn doors are on the other side.
They're on each side of the gable, exactly, yeah, you can't really see it, Peter, so.
Yeah, who's in the opening? Your bottom right corner where it says 66%?
I stole it from your design at your, your house up there.
There you go. No, that looks great.
So it's a lot, so it's, see, see how it plays with the height? It almost looks like a, you know, really a, a common single-family home. It's just on, on steroids. It's that play of that roof structure that helps it out tremendously. Again, we would, can probably list it as a condition, you know, we're, we're not interested in doing blues or any colors like that. We think that the white, white style fits in with the neighborhood, so obviously screams, you know, farmhouse and colonial. Or if we, if we did make any change in the particular color, it would only be like a tan or a brown perhaps. There wouldn't be any great, you know, greens or reds or anything like that, blues or ice, anything, anything like that would keep it all natural. We think it fits great into the surroundings. If we go down to one more level that Clay has here, I'm not too sure which one he has, this one might be a little hard to see, but it's kind of, kind of, kind of, kind of neat. The entryway, this was overlaid on, on the, on the site. So contour-wise, as you're going by on the street, you can see, unfortunately, the elevation, you know, you're probably 20 feet higher than the road or so looking in, but you can actually see the extensive landscaping that was also done on the front. So it's really, it's a tucked-in neighborhood. And I know it's hot, kind of hard to see sometimes on the plans, but this rendering kind of says, oh, oh, that is, you know, look how it's nestled into there. It's, it's all open field now, but by doing those large landscaping berms, it's kind of, you know, it settles in there, you know, kind of nicely. And then, of course, you can see the, you know, the gables kind of peeking up in there. So as we go to the next slide, this one's even more interesting, because you start to see the movement of the, of the architectural style. You start to see the, the play of the, the gables and the upper levels. Again, it's mimicking the, you know, the, the use of color and it's forward, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of fooling the eye to a certain degree. But that's a, I think that's a, in the neighborhood, I don't know if you have the site map, but it's, it's a one view in the neighborhood, actually, you know, looking at one of the back corridors, I believe.
Yes, that would be, oops, sorry. That's this building, that's building three.
It is, it's looking that way, so.
In the distance, you can see the leasing office on the rendering.
So it's just really interesting sometimes to see, not everybody does 3D renderings, especially superimpose it over elevations on the existing conditions, but we did do that in this particular case, so we thought it would be kind of helpful. I know it's not architectural, but you kind of see how the site is kind of looking as well, which is, which is really nice. It's got a nice feel, extensive landscaping, nice architectural details, and quite a bit of movement, which is really nice.
Mr. Chair, do we have any control or decision on color? Is that something we can say, we wanted white or, you know, any other color? I mean-
I suppose we could, I, you know, I, I don't know that we've ever done that, Dan can correct me that we'd be overstepping our bounds, but, you know, I think sometimes I, you, we do wonder about enforcement right over time, and, you know, things change, right? And there may become a point in time where you, where you, different color schemes.
Yeah, and we can conditionally approve it, but like I said before, I'm real, very safe saying it's either, either it's gonna be white, or it's gonna be a combination of, of a tan or brown natural tones. I'm not interested in changing it in the future.
I would think we could say that, I mean, if we wanted, you know, look, this is in a neighborhood, so we want to make sure that it doesn't turn into a, you know, a bright pink or something, you know, we probably could say that. I mean, we could say something about the color of the buildings, can't we, Dan? Or is that overstepping?
Well, you can say anything you want, as long as the applicant agrees, right? I mean, I don't, I mean, if there was a dispute, it would come down to, is this something that the town regulates in the ordinary course? Is there anything in the planning board's regulations that, that speak to
Yeah.
Design issues? If there is, then we, then we're on solid footing. If, if it's not, and no one, and, and the town doesn't have any bylaws or regulations governing sort of these types of design issues, then it might be a stretch to, to have that upheld.
Yeah.
Much improved.
Thank you. We, we believe it's night and day, and we're looking forward to doing something like this in this particular spot.
Mr. Yomans?
I like this design much better than the flat roof. However, I still question why, why you think that the open breezeway in New England in winter with snow, and, and I, I, I just think that it's, I know if I were looking at it and I were looking at apartments, and there are many apartments going up in the area that I've looked at just out of curiosity, and, you know, they don't have open, you know, breezeways. So the, the logic of that still defies me in, in a winter environment, how you're going to, you know, take care of that open, open breeze, breezeway in a, you know, in a bad storm. I mean, it's, I don't-
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but that, those breezeways are actually, actually completely covered. So when you can't get rained on or anything in there, and any snowdrifts are easily removed, it's only on the first, first little area within a couple of feet of the, you know, the breezeway itself.
So once I get through that, I can get to my, you know, apartment?
Well, we, we maintain it for you. That's the luxury of living in an apartment community. You don't have to do it like at home.
The logic of that defies me and my thinking, but that's, you know.
So I, I've heard of it, this was brought up and people in the public said it last time, and it, it occurred to me, my house has nothing covering the door or whatever, right? So if it snows, I get snow right off my door, and if it's a bad storm, I open my door and there's-
Right.
Same thing with your house.
Yep.
So I, I guess, so I look at this and I'm like, well, really, what is the difference? Well, actually, the difference here is that, you know, it actually is more covered. And, you know, I, I, I think a lot of these big apartments nowadays, they, they do have external entrances and they're open. And I can picture, you know, one down in Connecticut where, where I grew up, near, you know, where it's, you know, there's sets of stairs going up that are just wide open, completely exposed. And, you know, people, you know, these stairs lead to a couple of different apartments and, you know, that's, that's Connecticut, that's early winter. So I, I, I mean, I heard it the first time when people were saying it, and then I was thinking about it, it's like, I don't know, I have to go through snow to get to my front door. I don't, I don't see the problem.
One less door you gotta open with a bag of groceries in your mouth.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Good point, Peter, yeah, exactly.
From their point, it's one less door they gotta buy.
Guys, you need to lean into your mics or they can't hear you. And I only know from watching, when I re-listen to these, if you guys aren't close to the mic, I can't hear what you're saying.
And a typical building of this size would actually be larger, because then there's common corridor halls and things like that as well, so it, it, there is a form and function and-
All right, so one thing I do, I did want to mention, and you kind of alluded to Prentice, right? So I think it was an absolute disaster. I, I was very proud of the buildings that they came up with at Prentice, and we kind of drove a lot of that.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Until that, all that HVAC.
You've got installed it, yeah.
The buildings look great.
They look great, right up until that point. So, so let's, I want to be really clear that the mechanicals are behind that solid roof line.
That's correct, right now, they, they are, yeah. It's actually, it's actually technically a flat roof behind that masquerade.
Yep.
But they're all hidden.
But what about from the side, as you're going down?
Same, same thing, it's all hidden, you can't see it, no. A bird will say that looks like a disaster, but we're, luckily, we don't fly around.
Your, your first plan had the mechanicals for HVAC on the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we're changing that, yeah.
So you've moved those.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so, basically, when you look at this picture, right above those upper windows, maybe a foot or so above those is where the flat roof is, and then that parapet along the long side of the building, you know, protrudes about six feet up from there.
Gotcha.
So there's adequate space even to handle the, you know, double-spaced condensers.
Okay, so you just-
Do you guys have a roof plan?
What's that?
Do you guys have a roof plan?
Not, 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 not today, no.
Could, could you provide one, though? Because I, this is really hard to kind of visualize without seeing where you're talking in terms of where these mechanicals are gonna be on this roof.
So if you're looking at, can you see my cursor, Dan, on the screen?
Yeah.
So do you see where that black dotted line is here?
I do, yep.
So that will be the elevation of the flat roof, and then this- So that will be the elevation of the flat roof, and then this vertical face where the shingles are. That protrudes, yeah, angled, not vertical, excuse me. That protrudes about six feet up from that, and all the HVAC units would be held behind this face.
Mr. Chum, I'm sorry.
So, so that, that roof that's angled is not really a roof? That's just a, that's a wall? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yeah.
It's a facade.
Yeah, it's a facade, it's a parapet.
Okay, be, be help, again, it'd be helpful to have either a section or, or, or something, because it's only hard with two dimensions to see where you're talking and where that flat section is. I don't see the flat section, so.
Yeah, you, that's, that's, that's exactly the point. That's why, why, you know, I did these renderings also, because if you can't see an HVAC unit, they're behind the roof.
Right, but, but to Bill's point, we don't want to make the same mistake as we did with Prentice. So we really got to see where these are going to be and, and to have a better plan that shows those.
Yep.
Is this a new design or have these been built before?
Uh, ninety percent of this has been designed. You can usually skin a building any way you'll make it, you know, to look, make it look like something. The parapet's a little bit of a different, different design though. But all the floor plans have been built, the whole, the whole, the exact foundation, everything we're building. Actually, we're building these very, right now, we just started in Auburn, so we're already starting construction.
Yeah, I was going to ask you where.
Can we see these buildings? And it sounds like.
Not, not this farm-style one. You guys didn't want the, the, the other ones, but, yeah.
I mean.
The entryway, the footprint, the general
Yep.
shell of the building except for the.
I didn't, I didn't know if the architect had, had designed this ten years ago and there's some in Massachusetts someplace.
Yeah, there's some, I think, on the south coast, I think in Norwood, maybe. There's another older version of, of some of this breezeway style. But this is far superior to the one that they've done. Obviously, this farmhouse, look is totally different.
So, so Chad, the, what you, what you have on the screen now are the elevations.
Yeah.
You are, you are showing a sketch-up model which had two stories, but not three, so did, are you proposing a combination of two-story and three-story buildings?
No, it's actually, no, it's actually three. It's buried, the, the third, the, what do you have shown there? Yeah. See the three rows of windows? So that's three stories.
Well, I see it on the elevation plan, but not the sketch-up plan. Can you put the sketch-up plan back up?
Yeah, yeah. Steve, maybe go do the other one.
Yeah, Dan can't see this one, but.
Yeah, that side view one isn't good, Clay. Do the other, what, this one here?
Page five? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, right. Stop right there. Isn't that a two-story building?
No, it's a three.
No.
Three stories, yeah. See that, see how, the, Dan, actually, the, 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 the windows that are in the darker color, that siding color is really dark to mimic the, the roof. And then there's also roof assemblies up there as well.
All right, but I thought you told me that was flat behind there. That's not flat?
It actually is, yeah, it's still flat.
It's flat on top of there.
Yep, on top of the third floor, Dan, yeah, exactly.
On top of it, okay.
Sorry, that might be the confusion, yeah. I told you this was really, I told you this was really state-of-the-art. It's like a movie, movie set, so.
So I, you know, I think where, where Clay's got his cursor right now, I, that's roughly the flat roof line.
That's correct.
Building of the third floor and roof line of the roof.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, the, from the cursor up, the black, is that actual shingles or?
That's actually shingles, yeah, and it has a slope.
It's not just paint that's going to fade away.
It's a real shingles, even though it's on a slope.
But, but underneath it is paint.
Yeah.
An apartment.
That's going to be.
It's an apartment, but it's also siding or something.
It's just a darker color, again, to kind of bring the height down.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's, it's, it's an architectural play.
Nice.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on the subject, I see the gables are twelve pitch. The, the roof that is the parapet, is that also a twelve pitch?
It's all varying pitches, actually, especially on the sides.
But I, but we're, we're looking here to the left and right of the dormer, if you will. I mean, ten pitch, twelve pitch, it doesn't, it doesn't look to me like it's a five or a six pitch. So my point is it is a steeper pitch than a five or six.
It is, yeah, yeah.
And, and to, you know, to help Dan understand what's going on, each of these dormers is pretty narrow, so the twelve pitch, you see where the white points come together just above the roof line. But the building front to back is much, much wider than what the gable end is. So if that also has a twelve pitch or something close to it, if it was a full roof, it would be much, much taller. So it, they're keeping the slope of the roof, which twelve pitch, ten pitch, that's kind of colonial. It's the steeper roofs, but they're only going up hi- as high as they need to, to be high enough, as I envision it, to hide the mechanical equipment.
Yeah, maintain the third floor height and hide the mechanical at the same time.
Yeah, try to tie the gable, the, the upper gables into it, yeah. It's, I could probably do a section, of course, in the next meeting, but it's relatively simple, yeah.
And, and I can see where Dan would like to see a, a plan of the roof, so you could show where the parapets are, and then he's going to see what the bird would see with all the mechanical.
Yeah, we can do a see-through, kind of a see-through, kind of.
I think really the, the, the goal was garner your interest, and then we could advance the things.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Because I, I think what we're seeing is, you know.
Obviously, improvement from the last time, right? And again, it's on our best to, you know, we, we're going to own this, so.
Yep. Any other comments? Anything, anyone in the room want to say anything? Anyone on the phone want to say anything? Right, um. All right, anything else you want to go over at this point?
No, just the, 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 the water kind of killed itself with the, with Matt Pearson, with the, uh, the availability of water. He just reconfirmed that from the last meeting, so. Other than that, we're, we're okay.
Yeah, I think just maybe what's the look ahead looking like from everyone's perspective? Thinking, no, no, knowing where we are on the timeline, what we want to accomplish to get to the finish line.
Mr. Yeomans?
No, I'm just thinking what.
It's at some point, we've got to talk about the selectman's deal. The sewer, I'm interested in the sewer fees, I don't know.
I know you are, so.
I don't know if they care who they pay, whether it's the town or the sewer town, but.
Let's talk about sewer fees for a moment.
Oh, all right.
I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. Because I talked to Evan about this. Um, and I asked, and I talked to the chairman of the select board as well. So, the, we go back to the beginning, the proposal from the applicant was that we would waive fifty percent of the sewer fees, and they would in turn take that same amount of money and donate it back to the town. The sewer commissioners came out in their review and objected to that. They did objective to it in this project and then the other project where the same thing was proposed. I talked to Evan, and Evan's basically said, you know, that was something that the applicant had come up with and proposed, and nobody necessarily was married to it, and Evan says, I don't even know if we can do that, right? He doesn't even know that's legal. And, you know, the sewer commissioners object to it, the town administrators not even sure it can be done, and the board of selectmen, or at least, you know, Matt, the chairman of selectmen is like, the, the select board's not married to that either. So in my mind, we just don't do it. Just leave it. So we're not going to waive sewer fees, they're going to pay the full fees to the sewer department.
We were paying it anyways, and the logistics behind that, we were giving it back, however it is. There is above and beyond a hundred thousand dollar donation.
That stays.
Yeah, that stays, right.
That's fine.
But so there's no shuffle.
There's no shuffling, I'm not getting anything, it was just a.
Yep.
Well, actually, it would, it would have given the town of Grafton's kitty some more money to.
In the general fund, which is usually hard to fund, exactly.
In my opinion, it's always been the sewers done it.
Yeah.
We don't get cha- non-sewer people don't get charged for sewers. Non-people don't get charged for sewer, and I want to keep it that way.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So they should get the money.
Yeah, I, I.
Our sewer department works very good, it's like the water district. They, I know they have their fees, and sometimes when I was building, I didn't like them either, but I paid them, but we have a good water department.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're not waiving any sewer department fees.
Yeah, that's easy, yeah. I think it was a spirit of some of, yeah. It was a spirit of some of the, the, you know, what we, the intent. The same with the flat roofs and this, that, and the other thing, and all of our, you know, year-long work with the residents trying to do landscape buffers. And that's, that's why we're so far advanced in this process right now. We've done a lot of homework, obviously, and thought of everything on this particular job, so.
Yep, okay. You know, I, I, it seems to me at this point, we're, we're pretty close to, to, to wrapping this up, all right? You know, Dan, I, I, I think we're at the point where we should be talking about working on a decision. Or am I jumping the gun here? Is there something I'm forgetting? You know, and I don't even know where we are with the timeline, but I think we've, we've got a couple of months at least, right? Then we decided it was October or maybe November, November? So sometime in October, November timeframe, so.
I think it's October, isn't it?
Yeah. I, I don't know.
End of October, November, we've been going back and forth, but it's right around there.
So I, you know, I, I, I think we're at that point. Dan, you have, what do you, what am I, what am I forgetting, Dan? Help me out here.
No, I, I, I think you're right. I think the only other substantive issue that has been raised, which we haven't decided what to do about is, is the hydrology or hydrogeology evaluation that Bill Yeomans has raised. So if that's something you want to discuss, you know, we could evaluate that. If it's, if that's not as important, that's fine too. That, to me, that's the only outstanding sort of substantive issue. I have a few questions about little minor stuff, like who's going to build that trail, you know, things like that. But that, that can all get kind of flushed out through additional discussions about conditions. We need to really nail down the off-site traffic safety mitigation, but that, again, that can be worked out. So I, I think we have a final letter from Jeff, we have a final letter from tech on traffic and engineering, so that's, that's good. There weren't really any other follow-up on, on wetland, I don't think, wetland issues, so.
So, Dan, you said, do we have a final letter from you? You do, okay, all right, all right. That's fine.
I don't think there were any outstanding issues from.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right, so the, the hy- hy- hydrogeology issue, I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure how I, how I feel, I'm not sure what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Taking a breath.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Can I help you out on that?
Sure.
To, to the point of what is going to be studied, that's important to figure out now, to figure out whether you need the help of the other firm. If you're interested in the surface water, hydrology, stormwater runoff, volumes runoff, how much goes into the ground? I've covered that. If you're interested in knowing, once it gets into the ground, where does it go? And is it even relevant to the, to whether or not a forty B should be put there? That's the kind of question I think the board should be asking, whether it needs the other consultant.
If I may, just make a point. The, I'm not going to dwell on it. I had my say relative to that. But I think that a wellhead protection area, zone two, was developed with a lot of thought way back when. And I, I look at the point that you made relative to this particular building site and the capacity of the site itself to gather water, to recharge. And every development we've had before us, they talk about recharging the aquifer and, you know, recharging the water. So I think that that hydrologist and a look at that will further reinforce to the extent that we can direct that effort, per your suggestion, to see that it's done and what effect it might have in addition to all the design that they've done to adequately deal with the, with the water, the storm water that's coming into the site. We mentioned earlier, and we discussed it briefly, the curbing on Pleasant Street affect the flow. You've dealt with that, and they've calculated that into their, into their design. But I, I, I do think myself that unfortunately, that we don't have a lot of teeth in the bear, so to speak. But I would like to see the calculations, and I would like to see it beyond Echotech where they state it's not their, it's not their strength. And I would like to see someone come in, because we had someone in, in a previous project where I had concerns about the, you know, the water flow, and we had them in. Not that it's going to change it, but I think it will just assure in my mind that we're doing the most we can do to protect the, that seven-hundred-and-thirty-six acre parcel of land that way back when, and there's three of them in, in the town, that was designed to protect the, the, the water, the water supply. Now, you know, the water district, they can come up and say, there's no problem with capacity, and there's no problem with quality, until you don't have the capacity and you don't have the quality. And we've got a lot on the plate in the town, and I just think that it should be looked at in light of all of those factors. And the only other point I'll, I have the mic, I would just ask that you go back and just revisit that open stairway, because, you know, that to me just defies logic in the Northeast. And if I, if you were asking me to invest my money in this project versus another project similar, and I'd look at that investment and I'd say, I think that having doors, it's like saying to one of my kids growing up, it doesn't matter if you leave the door open in winter. You know, it doesn't matter about the storm. Doesn't matter to leave your garage door open in winter. And, you know, maybe what you say, I think there's some logic to it. You know, it's not going to have a tornado going through that, that space. But man, that first, that first bit of space, somebody's got to maintain it. So I, I just ask you to revisit that. And it's, you know, it's obviously your call, it's your project, but.
I guess I have one less tenant.
But the, but the, the hydrology study, I would like to see a, a qualified person come in and look at that, and Dan, you know, we've brought that name up before, so.
When, when, I can't remember which project we brought Scott in for, but.
Elm Rock.
Elm Rock.
Yeah, Peter knows. Peter absolutely knows. Stay away from the mic.
Well, yeah, so I, I, I think we actually might have had him for somebody else, maybe that was a different guy we had in for, I think, a project, a different project. But, you know, I, I, I think we're after much different situation, whereas, you know, there was a lot of land trust land, there was a lot of conservation land, there was a lot of concern about, you know, you know, this huge slope down into an important water body. You know, I, I think there was a lot more to it in, in that particular project. And then the other project I'm trying to think of, you know, also had a tremendous amount of wetlands nearby, and, and we're very interested in, in, in a lot more wetland impact than I think we have in this situation. In this situation, we seem to be very concerned about wellheads. And, yeah, I mean, we're supposed to represent other boards, et cetera, in town, except not the, the water district, they're, they're not even part of the town. I mean, and they've had ample opportunity to say that they have concerns about, you know, the wells or what this will do to their wells, et cetera. We, we went back and asked them to come here to address those issues, they've said they don't want to. I, I mean, I, I don't know how far we're supposed to go with, with that, for, for, for the well stuff. If they're not interested in protecting them, I, I, why, why are we going further?
I, I have something, you know, pretty brief to say. I mean, when it comes to initial wellhead protection areas, zone ones, zone twos, any of the water supply, local, overlay district, you name it, you know, there are, there are criteria. You know, there are, there are criteria that is very explicit that has to be met, state level, local level, you know, maybe even federal. All of those criteria have been met or exceeded in this situation. I don't know what third-party or beyond consultant is going to tell you that you could enforce. I mean, a hydrogeologic study is no joke. I mean, you're talking about a legitimate hydrogeology, geologic study would be, you know, wells drilled and monitored to know where groundwater is flowing. I mean, that's not what Scott Horsley would certainly.
A valid point was raised tonight by our town engineer that I hadn't thought about that and he brought it to my mind that I think that should be thoroughly studied because the, the examples that, uh, Mr. McCusker has brought up, they weren't in wellhead protection zones. There was no such thing. Uh, some of the other projects that are being proposed, and that's neither, that's not for discussion here. But I think that my concern is that we, and given Jeff's comments tonight, that we capture as much water as we can to recharge that area of this project. And, and I looked carefully at the soil, uh, the dig holes that you, I think.
Personally.
That you dug and you, you know, it's, it's almost like a beach. So the soil is very capable of taking that area and you're going to have a three-foot parking, a, a three-acre parking lot, basically is what it entails. And if we can put more water into the ground in that wellhead protection area, then I think long-term, the town will be better off for it. And that's, and I'm not going to have to worry about it as much as a lot of people in this town.
Yeah.
Is, is, is any of the water being taken off-site? Or taken out of that wellhead protection district?
No. The water that goes there now will go there after.
When it rains, does it now and it's going to stay there. Goes right into, back right into the ground. Nothing's leaving.
Right.
Even when it leaves the pa- the, the, the stormwater basins, it's going to areas where it has opportunities for recharge in the wellhead protection district.
So nothing's leaving. We're not taking water away. We're not pumping it out, anything. Whatever's going there today is going back right into the ground.
In fact, the soils are so good that if the regulations allowed for a higher infiltration rate, we would use it. We're going to get way more infiltration than we're calculating for. That's the reality. And fortunately, we live in this box of regulations. You know, I, I just.
And, and, and going back to the last meeting, again, can, can, can it, we're in a groundwater protection zone. I, 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 I heard that there's 726 acres in the town of Grafton, okay? So does anybody know what the top three kind of things you look for in new developments? Or what, what are bad things for, for that area?
Uses, yeah.
To occur?
There are use, there are use for, to answer, to.
So I already know what the answer is.
Yeah, perfect.
So the primary, primary thing is septic systems, okay? We don't have any of those. Secondary, some of you may have oil heat downstairs from older systems. I'm sure there's plenty in the 726 acres. We're fully electric. We have no oil. So now we're protected, we're protecting two areas. Another criteria is also ha- household hazardous materials. Maybe you painted the shed out back, you have it in your basement, you, you know, the old days, everybody goes to the, uh, you know, the Jiffy Lube now, but in the days when I used to go there, I used to change my oil and I'd have it in the garage. We don't have that at this apartment community. So your top three criteria tiers, and also that there's a fourth one as well. I think it's a stormwater. So your stormwater management system is how do you apply new stormwater management is, you know, as salt's going to the catch base and they're cleaning all, all old, old, old things. We have everything all brand new. And further, we have Jeffrey, who already signed off on, on, on most of this stuff and says that it already conforms to or exceeds to the current stormwater. So I think, I think you actually have to remember is like, well, what are we talking about? We're talking about the rain, every, everything's already going there now. Whatever we're doing is going back into the ground for recharge. We have no oil. We have no septic systems and we have no ho- house wastes and, and things like that because you, people don't keep pink cans and stuff in an apartment and stuff like that.
I agree with your observation.
Yeah.
We also have a three-acre parking lot and Jeff has brought up the point where we have the ability to capture all of the roof runoff into the ground, not across the parking lots. And what you say is true. I understand that. But, uh, that's what I look at. This is, that's the impervious, you know, parking lot that you're putting into this seven-acre parcel. So I, I understand what you're saying and I've read that as well.
And I appreciate your, your sensitivity to the whole, you know, groundwater protection zone. Also, you know, I, I, I can, I could, I could review Jeff's. I'm a, I'm a little perturbed that I have to go back and figure out, recalculate my drainage system to do recharge units for. I thought it was at the, already at the finish line. So, you know, bear with me. I mean, if we can tie a few roof drains in or something and other parts of site. I'm all in. I've got a little bit extra time. I just don't have endless pockets to keep redesigning when I think I'm already kind of done.
So, um, it's safe to assume that you would object to having a peer review of hydrogeology?
A- a- absolutely. I, I find no evidence thereof and completely a hundred percent as well. It's probably, I can't, I'm not a professional engineer like these guys to the left and right, but I, I, I would say if they meet the current state and exceed, I think I'm safe. And plus I don't have, not being an engineer, I know I'm not heating with oil. I know I don't have a septic system and like that. So I'm, I'm confident with that.
Yep, okay.
Plus my, my ability to do Pollard Street, I've already done, there's quite a bit of there too, so bear with me.
I, um, I, 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 I can't get to a point where I want to try to force them to, to do this study. I don't, I, I don't, I can't justify it. That's my opinion. I'm curious as to how other board members feel. Um, if we want to try and, you know, force it, we, we can, we can, but I mean, how do others feel? I'm asking my board members.
I, I feel like as a board that we should all sit here and say, including Brian, and I'm sure Dan has some input, but say whether or not we, what we agree, do we agree that we move forward? I mean, I agree with you that I think all, everything seems to have been met. I don't know why to keep going back. I mean, I'm not an expert either, but, um, I agree with you that I think we cannot force that issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, let me just, again, very briefly summarize Graves Engineering's review of the project. It included review of the mass, of the project's compliance with the Mass D E P Stormwater Standards Handbook. That standbook includes standards to address stormwater discharges to critical areas. One of the critic type, tip, one critical area is the Zone Two Public Water Supply. So we looked at the project's compliance at, with the state requirements with respect to that under the stormwater. Likewise, at the local level, at the zoning by, in the zoning by law, it addresses water supply protection. Overlay District, essentially the same thing. We looked at compliance with that. And that spoke more to qualit- quantity of water, not quality. And hence the, the, the thought tonight to add something for what I feel is short money that only makes a good thing better with respect to quantity of discharge. And lastly, with respect to quality of the stormwater discharge, we looked at the project's compliance with the Grafton Stormwater Regulations, which I spoke of, some of the specific requirements earlier tonight, so.
Thank you. Mr. Waller, you want to speak?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm struggling as well to, to see a justification to force, you know, another expert to, uh, to do a review when, you know, if, if there was some significant risk factor, um, specific to this project, I, I think it would absolutely warrant it. But I, I just, I'm struggling to get there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, do you care to opine on this?
I, um, I have great faith in everything Jeff has said. Yeah, I mean, we rely on him so much, he's never failed us. Uh, Matt Pearson, if he had, he's been in the, the water business with the water district for, God, 30 years, must be or more in Grafton. And if he had a concern about a well zone, whatever zone it was, um, he would have brought it up. There was, there's no flies on Matt Pearson. If he had a concern, he would have brought it up first thing, so it, uh.
Yeah.
And I paid for one of these studies and I didn't think much of the results at all, so. All I can remember is rain gardens on private residences that were going to get stomped up. That was the person's suggestion.
Just circling one, one time back to Stephen and, uh, Jeff too. Uh, I have no issues, you know, looking to see if, you know, you guys can work out where to tie in, you know, some recharge for the roofs. Not, not, not a big deal.
Yeah. No, we're, we're.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add a.
Yep.
Thought on this. I, we, we've been talking almost exclusively about the Zone Two. Um, in, in my minds, the bigger issue was the pond, um, that all the stormwater from the parking areas was basically being centralized in a location that was about 50 feet from the pond where there was a steep slope. Um, and, and I know from experience that the state regulations are actually not adequate to protect ponds from mutrification from nitrogen and phosphorus. Uh, in fact, the Title V regulations just changed in the Cape because they weren't inadequate for a long time. Uh, so to me, I think that was probably the bigger issue, uh, just in terms of water quality and making sure that the project wasn't going to have any adverse impact, impacts on, on the pond itself. I don't know if it does or not. I, I'm not advocating for the review. I'm just, I'm just explaining, I think, why I brought that issue up, uh, several meetings ago uh, as a potential, you know, second set of eyes to look at whether there might be something to perhaps improve the situation. I think what we talked about tonight, by decentralizing the, the infiltration and spreading it across the site, would make a huge difference. Um, and I, I think that's something we should strongly encourage the applicant to, to do as, as part of his next drainage set.
Yeah, and, and he's going to. That, that, I think, I think we're beyond that for sure. And, and, you know, so I, I guess, Dan, you know, you, you said it though, that the state regulations aren't sufficient to protect the ponds. So I, I, so what I'm kind of struggling with, and, and I, I think I'd heard this before as well, when, when that, that part of the conversation came up a, a few meetings ago, you know, so if we, if we bring in somebody and he says, and he says that we're going to pollute the ponds, okay, what do we do about that? If, if the state regulations aren't good enough to protect them? Um, and, and we're pretty much following our local conservation regs. I mean, wh- wh- what's left to do? We can't make up our own. We can't expose them to, you know, we can't force them to do something above and beyond. I don't think so. So that's part of what I'm struggling with as well is even if they come up with something that says, you know, we're going to, you know, they're already following, they have to follow state regs, they're already following the local regs, so that's, so that's kind of the struggle I'm having. So that's why I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm not in support of encouraging the applicant to, or, or I guess we'd be forcing the applicant to, to, to have, you know, this type of review. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Waller?
And I, I believe in a prior meeting related to this discussion that the applicant had agreed to, um, I think low nitrogen or no nitrogen fertilizer on, um, to somewhat mitigate Dan's concern of what was flowing.
He's acknowledging that right now.
I, I was just going to say that actually, Brian, so good point. Uh, it's low phosphorus from the fertilizer campaign. So we can list that as one of the conditions. So that's above, above and beyond, so.
Yep. Um, I, I don't know where to, you know, if you want to try and make a motion to try and force it, I, I think you know where it's going to go. Okay. Um, so, you know, I, I think at this.
We have one question again. Um, it's Kelly Bajewski again. She said, did anybody attend the recent water district meeting? Where they, where they addressed the. Where they addressed the brown water issue on Pleasant Street and the surrounding areas are having. I know they did have a water district meeting, I think.
No, I, I mean, you know, Matt Pearson alluded that, to that in his, in his note and.
That we just got.
And I think he just reiterated what I think I said at the last meeting, that it's, you know, it's a temporary situation. I don't know where it is right now, but.
I haven't.
He alluded to it and.
Basically what the, it said, the Board of Water Commissioners.
Yeah.
Board of Water Commissioners met with the dozen residents last week at their monthly meeting. The subject came up about the proposed project and its impact on demand and quality. Approval of this project by the district has no impact on either. The water quality is from operating the Trinity Ave well due to the treatment plant on East Street being offline for several months. That situation has been resolved. The district has ample reserves for this project. So that's the answer.
Okay. Yeah, so I, so I still see.
I just, yeah, I just couldn't, I answered it live.
Got it, okay. Um, so I think at this point, um, we're really headed towards, we've got a couple of waivers that we need to, we need to fine tune, but it seems like we should be heading towards a, a draft decision. Do you agree with that, Dan, at this point?
I do. The draft conditions at least, yes.
Um, I, I, I mean, I don't want to put too much pressure on you, but why wouldn't we? Well, I guess the decision's boilerplate, so it's really, it's, it's the draft conditions that's really the interesting part.
Yeah, we always, we've always started with the conditions and then once we decide the conditions, I, I draft the findings to match the conditions.
Yep, yep. No, you're right, you're right. My, okay. Um, how much time to, do we want till our next meeting?
So, the timing is tough because I'm, I'm literally going to start a two-week vacation tomorrow.
Good for you.
So.
And then I'm gone for two, and then Dan, I'm gone for two weeks after that, so.
Well, but, but, I mean, Dan, yeah, don't take this wrong, but.
No, I know. I know, dance is a little more important, but.
Unless you're going to write the conditions.
No, but if you guys have a meeting, that's fine. I just got to make sure I've got somebody to set everything up for you guys.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. But I'm, I'm going to toss it back to Dan. So I, I get you're, you know, you're out for two weeks, that's good. Um, we do have some time. Um, so I mean, what are we looking at, like mid-September? Something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say ideally third week of September to have a meeting. I could get the draft done in two weeks at when I get back. Actually, I get back in the fifth, so ideally like third week of September.
So that would be the 21st.
How does, uh, the 21st sound for people for our next meeting?
So I'm not here, but I will try and get someone to set everything up for you guys. I, I get in that night, so I can't guarantee I could come in. I landed.
Do we have agreement on, on what the, uh, closing date is?
End of October.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Brian.
The three of us went back and forth on it and I, we had had Dan in on that email and I don't think we ever got a definitive on what the actual, because Clay gave us a date, but we were going around on a different date, so we just weren't sure.
So, so I, I guess, Dan, there's, there's really question as far as, you know, what, what the, the date is that we have to be done by, um.
It, it's 180 days from the, from the date of the hearing, the first hearing that opened. So as long as we have that hearing date, we should be able to calculate the.
But then we got the stay in there, don't we?
Oh, right, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, you're right. And that was a little bit ambiguous because there was, the regulations are not super clear as to what, um, you know, what, what, what is, what is stayed, what's told. Um, but if we have an agreement from the applicant.
Yeah. Then it's all blue.
From recollection, it was October 17th. I've got it charted on my Outlook calendar on my desktop in the office and that, you know, takes into account the amount of time that it was stopped for that whole Safe Harbor appeal.
Yeah, I think we honored that stay and then it started, so I don't know the exact date, but I can email it around.
Yeah.
I think it was mid-October sometime, I thought.
If they have it down in.
I, I had the, I think the first week of October, like October 7th, but, I mean, if we can agree, I, I just think with the third week of September, it's going to get tight.
Yeah.
Well, if we're at October 17th, is that?
So if you guys have a meeting on the 21st, the 17th is three weeks later. Or actually four, one, two, three, four weeks.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're going to be all right and.
And you don't need to actually have the hearing open as you deliberate.
It's true.
Right. Yeah, good point.
It's better that way. So if you, if you want to have the meeting on the 21st, like I said, I won't be here. I mean, I land, I could try and get in here, I don't know. Um, but unless you want to move it to like the Tuesday or Wednesday the following week or Thursday, I mean, that's your call.
Let's go with the 21st and, and, you know.
Cause I won't be here that.
Oh.
I, I'll be on the 21st.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's accurate. So everyone from the board is available on the 21st.
Yep.
The only thing we don't know about is Metalli. Uh, so we just have to hope for the best. Um, so let's go with the 21st.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have to work with, you know, you, you just have to kind of line me up with somebody I can work with here.
Probably Amber. Cause she'll like, she can at least get you in. I can get everything set up with the Zoom meeting. And the only issue is, and I've already talked to Evan about it, they're going to try and have somebody have access to my email. So I will check with Evan Mon, uh, Tuesday when I come back in, that starting from like September 4th before I leave, everything that gets sent to me will probably have to be CC'd to Amber, just so she has access to it.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay.
I mean, I can get the minutes from the video, so that's not that big of a deal. It's just disseminating and copying and getting stuff to you guys. But I will make sure Amber can do that.
Yep. All right. So let, let's shoot for the 21st.
Is there any benefit to Dan and Katrina being out that the applicant's counsel submits the draft decision with, I know conditions are probably something you would want to do, Dan, but I don't want to break phone calls, but I'm just trying to help.
Well, I, I, Dan, I don't know if you have an opinion. I, I guess, you know, I, I know that we have, you know, we have a permit format, template, whatever that we've been using and it's, and has been trying to be using consistently. And so I don't, I don't even want to.
It's no secret what that is though, like, cause it's on record, there's other decisions you could.
This is true. Yeah. I, I don't know if there's any advantage to that or not. Dan, I mean, feel free to weigh in. I mean, have you heard what Steve said?
It, it's probably not, I mean, you're welcome to have, you're a lawyer, take our, take our format and, and send it to us. I, I mean, you know, draft, draft the conditions consistent with what we've done in the past and, and send that to me and I could take, take it from there. I'm not sure how much time that really saves me. It might save a little bit of time, but as long as we, as long as you, as long as your person sticks to, you know, the format. I mean, a lot of the conditions that are in the decision are boilerplate. And Steve, you'll probably recognize a lot of the language from projects in Norfolk and other towns.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I mean, if you want to do that, I don't, I don't have an objection to it. I think it's fine, but I, I don't, I don't know if it's really worthwhile.
And I, I, I think we're okay timeline, timeline wise. And, um, you know, I, I think we're at a point here where, you know, I think, I think we'll be able to work together and get this thing done. And, you know, if we, you know, slip beyond whatever, October 17th, whatever, I think we'll still be, okay. All right.
How about if he comes up with new waivers?
Yeah, that would be a quick, sort of been looking and thinking about, looking, Travis has been looking at sub-division regs. There's a handful.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good point. I mean, and, and, you know, we'll have to cross that bridge on the 21st. If he comes in and, you know, there's some, there's some problems and we'll just have to cross that bridge.
Yep.
I might suggest that in this interim period, since we have a month, maybe the applicant in two weeks can provide a list of additional waiver requests to the board and, and the board could immediately just transfer that over to Jeff to look at. So we aren't, you know.
Yeah. I, I was, I was thinking the exact same thing, you know, and that's, you know, one, you know, I'd said I wanted everyone to be prepared for waivers this time and, and the exact same thing will apply for 21st. Let's get them out ahead of time so we all can go through them and be prepared to talk through them. Yeah, definitely.
Piece of cake.
It's probably been, going to be ones that we've always granted anyways.
Exactly.
I don't envision there being a lot. And Mr. Chairman, I won't be able to be here on the 21st. So if I could have that back and forth about waivers and, and get you something in writing, whether it's an email or a letter, I'd, I'd just do it while in advance of the 21st.
Yep.
So yeah, when you send those, send it to the entire board. Maybe and gone.
Okay.
I'm sure you have everyone's emails. If not, I'll send the.
I think, yeah, probably have.
No.
I probably have.
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Um, nobody else will have anything to say. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to continue case number.
892.
892 to September 21st at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Again, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Vice Chairman votes yes. So we'll see you on the 21st.
Excellent. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Katrina, when?
Was there anything else on our agenda besides minutes?
Seven.
After September.
Brian, you want me to keep driving here?
Yep. Yeah, if you, it's probably easier if you don't mind.
I gotta be honest with you, I don't feel like.
No.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Damn.
So moved.
Somebody say second.
Second.
Motion made second. And Mr. Waller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Yomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes or adjourned?